All right, so, so it is six thirty, let's call the meeting to order, let's go through roll call, Lisa Sheryl Allen.
Yeah.
Good morning, Sonia.
Yeah.
President Jan Duncan.
Yeah.
All right, and I'm Robert Vinnie Mayors here, so when you do have forum, then you're gonna continue on, if we'll all rise and try to create a place. I play the lead. Thank you all. We've done that, and now we get to, because this is a regular, regular meeting, based on our resolution last, at the last meeting, we were open for public comments, but we did not have any Zoom public comments submitted by noon, so there's none for that, and we have none filled out today, as I understand it. So there are no public comments for tonight. That takes us to the next agenda item, which are a report, I have two things I'd like to share with the council and the citizens that are listening. One, the first one is, is that if you've been looking this week at Southeast River Road, as the county has begun the repair work down there, it's been on the schedule for the last ten months. So that's the good news, and the other good news is, is that through discussions with them or whatever, they are working on our portion of Southeast River Road, and it is getting fixed, so a lot of the folks that live down there should be happy that that's going on. They need to know that. The other piece of information that's happened this week is, just like we're lining up to go in for some of these mitigation grants, the county is also doing that. And as part of that, they, these are all competitive grants that are due, to be submitted at the end of October, October twenty eighth. They have come up with the idea that we, the county needs an evacuation center, or could, could attempt to go get grant money to create an evacuation center. This is possibly a twenty-five thousand square foot building, houses maybe a thousand people if in emergency for floods, and wildfires, and the hurricanes, and or whatever. When it's not being used for emergencies, it would be used as a, rented out as a, a large meeting, meeting building, et cetera. But, well, to go in for this grant, they need, it's under the same guideline, which is a one percent match, they're talking ten million, north of ten million dollars, which is a hundred thousand dollars of match money, that the county's having trouble swallowing all of that by themselves. They have just yesterday reached out and wanted to know if they could get participation by the municipalities within the county. That is still up in the air, but if, if it comes together and they want to do that, they will need an interlocal agreement between the municipalities and the county, talking about what our share is and how we would be included. This is similar to, the thought process right now is very similar to cost sharing, like the coronavirus relief fund was doubled out, like the countywide dispatch that we currently participate in, like the countywide radio services for first responders that we participate in. So if it's ten million bucks, that's a hundred thousand dollars that has to be shared with our population, it would be about three percent, maybe a little less than that, we're talking three, four man, to go off and participate. The reason I'm only bringing it up to the council tonight is, is the schedule is very short. If we're gonna, if they decide here in another day or two that they're gonna do this, then on the meeting of the eighth, December eighth, excuse me, September eighth, we will have a resolu, have to decide as a council, we'll have to have a resolution to accept this interlocal agreement that hasn't been written yet, et cetera, so I'm telling y'all so that you're aware that this, this might be coming down the pipe. And we'll discuss it more on the eighth, but I didn't, didn't want you to be taken totally unawares, because that's always a bad thing. And with that, that's all I've got that's happened since last week.
Mayor, um, I know that it's for discussion, but on Southeast River Road with all of the road trucks that are coming, I know that citizens have been reaching out to me for the excessive speed, and that they're coming around that corner and, and stuff, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that citizens are, are sending me messages, because they're, they're fearful of the fast trucks that are going through there, and they're driving in excessive speeds, so I did call in to make sure that Harry was aware.
He is, he spends some time down there, will continue to do so as well, so. Those trucks are coming, of course, from the, the work they're doing on the loop, the San Marcos Loop. Up there, they're off Highway eighty and also six twenty-one, they're moving a lot of dirt, I don't know where they're going with it. Those trucks come in, they pick up dirt, they take it somewhere, and they come back, and so they are usually nineteen seventy-nine, it's connected between eighty and where they're going. So far, while he's been there, I don't believe we, we actually had one speeding. Now, that, that intersection, or that, that piece of the road is, is an S curve, and all vehicles look like, as they go through that curve, look like they're really going faster than the stated speed limit, but when you put the radar on there, you get a different answer. So, uh, we're, we are sensitive to that and need to watch this, but what we certainly don't want doing is, is coming through town, we need to stay on, stay alert. Okay.
Nothing to report.
All right, moving on, we will go straight to, again, to item five, which is to review the five-year spin plan. And Jared will lead us through that.
So, uh, first item. The first item is the, going through the future year spend plan. So the read aheads for this were the future year spend plan documents and the Excel files. We'll work out of the Excel file tonight unless there's any comments on, on the written document. And just to, as a refresher, how this relates to our community strategic plan and future, and the future year spend plan and the budget, how it all flows together. If you start in the, with the picture there on the slide, the top left, community strategic plan provides the priorities, initiatives, desired outcomes that we're going to focus on over the next five years. The future year spend plan is meant to be a, a tool that the city council can use to shape future financial resource decisions by addressing the strategic priorities that, with, through funding arrangement. So, it's not meant to replace the annual budget, it's meant to inform the annual budget. Nowhere do we need to make the future year spend plan match that annual budget every year, or vice versa, but it's meant to be a guiding document in the development of the annual budget. So, this year is, is a little different, it's very condensed, we're doing both at the same time, so it would make sense if, if one's gonna feed the other. But, as we go forward in the future years, the future year spend plan is meant to serve as the baseline for the annual budget development process, and then address any short-term priorities or issues that, that come. So, the purpose for tonight is to get, contain city council input on the FISIP, the future year spend plan, for achieving those strategic priorities that were in the community strategic plan that was approved last city council meeting, and use that future year spend plan that, that we discussed tonight to inform the annual budget. We're not trying to approve this plan tonight, we're looking to get input, we'll, we'll prove it in the future. This would have been done much sooner if we had the opportunity to hold city council meetings back in, in June, July, so that's what we're doing tonight.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, I'll start from the summary slide, and then we can, we can go from there. This, this includes the current fiscal year, these were projections that, the, I think the budget numbers, or projections from, from early in the year. So these are gonna look different than what you're gonna see later when we talk about the budget. It's organized by future budget years, FY twenty, which we'll be discussing tonight, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. There, it's aligned according to the strategic priorities and the strategic plan. So the infrastructure and public amenities, maintaining community, economic development planning, and then management of public services. Most of the work is going to be in management of public services, because that's, that's your daily operations protection. The revenue assessments that were put in here were, were kept pretty straight line. We didn't, we did not, when you're, when you're looking at forecasting, you don't want to make assumptions unless you're, you're doing the proper math to, to come up with valid, uh, numbers. And so, for that's purpose, I kept it straight line for, you know, service fees and the rest. For tax revenues, I took a inflation rate, if you will, of three percent, and just had that be a straight line going out. So when we're looking at the balance, some of those balances may be a little long because those assumptions are different in terms of how you're projecting revenue. The revenue isn't the main focus, may, well, we want to focus on expenses and according to priorities, and making sure we're, we're somewhere within, in that budget, on a balanced budget for future year spend plan, but by no means do we need to be. It's just most, it's there to set expectations and give us a baseline to look at. So, that's to say, if we want to have a deficit of ten thousand dollars in FY twenty-five, by all means, you can have that in the future year spend plan, it'll likely need to be adjusted over time. So that, that's kind of the overview. Are there any questions on the strategic, on the spend plan, how it's laid out in some of those papers?
So, because we're on, on Zoom, what we can do is we can go around the council and, and give each council member an opportunity to go, go weigh in here. So who wants to go first? Raise your hand on, on the screen if you want to go first. Okay, Sonia, it's you.
So, I mean, from, from what I've seen on there, the projections that you made, they're just kind of like straight of costs, or anything like you were saying, you didn't want to put an outlandish number that was on there, so I think that the projections look pretty good. They are, you know, current with where we're at now, and I didn't really see anything, you know, from them.
Okay.
No, I feel, I feel the same. We went, we went over all of this, and it looks exactly the way we wanted it to.
Okay, Jan, you got any comment?
No, I think it looks good, so far, from what I've, uh, looked through, so, um, I'm okay with it.
Well, I got comments, so.
Uh, no, it's, 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 it's a, I said a line item that doesn't show up very often. I mean, I could be, it could be wrong, I think I pulled this off of a previous question that was.
The current sector, that's, that's, that's no doubt, right?
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's, you know.
We don't, we don't want to plan, yeah. Okay, so, so my comments are, first off, we're about fourteen thousand dollars wrong way at the bottom line when we add up all the years. I think that needs to be balanced, uh, we need to go in there and make adjustments. I have, just for the council's benefit, I did give some of this flatline revenue stuff, I gave Jared some ideas on how to go not make that flatline, to go play in there, things like, we, we've got a flatline in there for solid waste, but we've got a contract that runs out in ten years, so we know what the prices are, we can flatline the number of customers and then use the prices to get, to be more reflective of the real revenue.
What is mine, I don't know.
That would be up under the facility fund, and it's the five thousand.
Five, five twenty.
Five twenty.
Fifty twenty. Yeah, so, so what the mayor's saying is, right now, it's, it's at one eighty-eight, and that doesn't take into account the contract price, and our total revenues are dictated out of contract prices. So, um, in the future update, we can include those contract prices to, to make those look closer to what they will be in the future.
Right, two things that go into the calculation of that, one is number of customers, and the other one is, is the contract price. And we know the contract price is going up by the same as in the contract, by the amount that's in the contract.
I appreciate.
For years.
Right, the budget is up there.
So that's, that's, that's one thing, and then the municipal court thing is, is a question mark, whether or not that's really flat or should reflect some, some changes or something more, I don't know, we didn't talk about, maybe nothing's talked about, it's not what to do. Franchise leaves, we talked about, that's not a big deal, and the sales pack, we have been very conservative on the sales pack, as we have in our budget, and as, as we have, it's good news for us because it continues to outperform, but, uh, we may be a little too conservative here on, on the revenue side. And then I gave Jared a bunch of small expense item issues that were related to the projections for this year, which is the starting point, that are, that are a lot of times based off of one time event during the year. In other words, most of the time, we've got a, a little bit each month, something comes along, but there's several things in here that, that are once or twice a year seen, sometimes just quarterly, it is, when you take the snapshot, if you've got three quarters in it, you may overstate with, with five months left to go, or four months left to go, you might, you may overstate the, the projection. Vice versa is true, you've got three in there, and you only got, but you got the last one for, the last quarter already done, you might over, overstate the expenses in the out use as well, so. We've still got a little tweaking of this, but I believe when he does all of that, we'll end up having, it'll either be show an unbalance in the, in the right direction, several others, or it'll be really close to be a balanced.
Right, so one of the ways that that, for the, um, solid waste particularly, by keeping the revenue flat like this, but the expenses had a, had a inflationary change, as a function, you get, those get out of whack pretty badly sometimes with this one time, so there's some, there's something up that, that will do.
But other than that, I think this is, this is kind of the right thing to go do, that, that, that was, uh, that's everything.
Yeah, that's, that's the overview, and then, uh, what I want to do is.
Let's talk a little bit about, you go to.
This one's on priority one.
Uh, okay, go first, perfect, go, go first.
Yeah, so priority one, this is the infrastructure and public amenities, and the projects that are outlined here are taken from the strategic plan. And this includes things like transfer creative capital improvement fund, from the library, road maintenance, and park operations. And so what I'm looking for city council input tonight on is, do those projections, those, those funding levels, do those look right to you to address the strategic priority?
And we're gonna go around the room again, this time, let's start with the reverse order. Jan, you got any comments on priority one?
Uh, not at this time.
And Lisa?
Um, other, other than on road maintenance, are we, are we making any considerations for the plans that we've had in the past to actually repair or replace one particular road?
Would that be capital improvement?
So what, what this is showing, there's, there's a mechanical process that's working here, that instead of putting all the funding into the maintenance line, we're creating a new transfer to a capital improvement fund at a greater rate. And so if you look, if you make the assumption that capital improvement fund is gonna be all roads, you, you want to see that increase overall from what is currently issued. Now, capital improvement would also include other high dollar value items that have a significant lifespan. It could include vehicles if we wanted to define it as such.
Do we have it?
But in most, most, go ahead.
Do we, do we have it defined?
Not yet.
Okay.
We might have.
You know, I thought this in the past, it, the past few years, it's been, we, we start out with a balanced budget, and then if we get lucky and get right way on the, on the revenue, and get lucky and we get right way on the expenses, at the end of the year, there's some money left over. And at that point in time, we've taken it and put it into the, that long-term capital improvement. The, the suggestion out of this is that we do that up front. Instead of wait to see how good it turns out, we just go say, okay, we're gonna go off and force ourselves, go put some money away for long-term capital improvement, and that's what that line that says develop, no, that's what that line that says transfer the capital improvement fund is all about, it's got thirty grand a year in that.
Okay.
This is similar to what we, we did with the emergency fund, where we said we wanted to get to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the emergency fund, and we put fifteen grand away every year, and we allow for that in the budget. We say, let's go make sure we allow for that in the budget for that. Now, Jared and I had talked earlier about the road improvement, I'm not ready to credit, that's the, we go fix the potholes, and fix the sides, and cut the bushes, and make the place, you know, more accessible. I, I, I still think we need to keep the heat on that portion of it as well, but, uh, the idea with the five-year spin plan is to try to balance those two and, and, you know, plan for the future in that way. So, I'm not real happy with the forty going to twenty-six, six, and then down to twenty-two for a way, way. I'd like that to stay up some, but I have no problem with going in upfront, and basically at thirty thousand dollar rate, but we've been outperforming that each year, and it would probably do so again next year.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with, with the majority of what you said, except for the fact, what I mostly agree with is that I too am not a fan of seeing that forty drop to twenty-six to twenty-two all the way through the year twenty, twenty-five. Um, I know, when I say this council, quite frankly, I'm pretty sure it's all of us who are sitting here. You know, it's been three or four years ago, but we spent an exorbitant amount of time on the looking ahead and trying to plan for a road, not just improvement, but let's pick a road, a particular street, and let's start this process, otherwise, we just continue to chase our tail. And I'm, I certainly agree with the fact that we need to continue to take care of the roads that we have with the pothole repairs, um, and, and what have you, but, so may, maybe I need to understand better why it drops like that. I, I will say that I do agree with just jumping out there like we did with the emergency fund, and just right up front, just making a decision that we were gonna put away X amount of dollars. So I am knowing that that capital improvement, at least roads, is, is, is included in a capital improvement, even though there are other items that I'm happy about, so I guess help me understand a little bit why we're dropping it.
It's to help balance, otherwise, if we, if we don't drop it with our current, um, sales tax assumptions and things, we'll, we'll run a deficit. At that, if we're going to, if we're gonna spend the amount, transfer the amount into a capital improvement ban, a fund of thirty thousand, um, you're gonna have to reduce some of that road maintenance, and that's where I saw the bill pay, to make it happen. By all means, we, we could level that transfer out, stair step it down more gradually, um, as we build up the capital improvement fund. The, the goal was to try to get as much into that as quickly as possible, uh, to try to get towards these fixes, since we are using a, you know, pay-as-you-go approach, instead of going out and securing financing currently.
Well, that's a future.
What was that, Jan?
That's a future agenda item, uh, as far as doing roads.
Uh, yeah, but this is deciding on a method of trying to fund that, though, is, is really difficult. Let, uh, but, but let's talk a little bit about that, Jared is more of the expert on this. I've been one that's pushing toward, we need to pay as we go, because we don't want to get into a case where we're out of, out of money, like we've worked here several years ago. Due to floods and activities, we've done a lot of stuff to make sure that that doesn't happen. Uh, however, instead of thinking about thirty thousand dollars as, thirty thousand you give to a, a, a street contractor to go, build you a chunk of roads, it doesn't go very far. If you think about thirty thousand dollars as the principal and interest payment on a loan, uh, you get a, a, a much, much bigger pile of, of money to go off and, and fix the roads now. And so, I'm not suggesting that we plan to do that in twenty twenty-one, but I am saying that, that, uh, putting something in place where we force ourselves to pay that for a few years, to make ourselves believe that we could meet that kind of a loan payment, was, was not a bad thing at all. I, I think if we could build that into our culture and our, and the structure of the city, that all of a sudden we would become, convince ourselves that, oh yeah, we can do this, and off we go.
Okay.
As, as someone recently told me, you know, if, if you tried to pay for a house as you go, you rent forever. You know, people do it, mortgages are there for a reason, loans are there for a reason, and it allows you to go do things that are smart and, and carries you toward the future, so. That's why I think what he, what he's come up with here, and I think Jared's credit, he's the one that put this, put that piece in there, is not a bad thing to, to, to consider, whether it's thirty or at least between, I don't know.
And, and so I just want to be clear, what I'm hearing, um, is that based on the structure of these numbers, you are, you mayor, are considering entertaining um, the notion of, in the near future, looking at a possible loan-type structure for road improvement? Am I, is that what I'm hearing?
It's financing, financing in, in general, so there's, there's many financing options. You know, you can use bonds, there's, there's other short, shorter-term financing. Um, we're gonna be, and how you, what security you place on that, if it's gonna be secured with your property taxes, your sales taxes, your general fund, you're looking at different interest rates for those things. We, we, if we wanted to pursue this much further, we'd likely want to bring in, um, a financial consultant to, to give us the lowdown on what that stuff is, and, and I know it generally, but they'll have better advice than I would on the specifics of what we'd want to look at. But in the, in the general, go ahead.
No, please finish.
Yeah, in the general sense, this is the setup. Most capital improvement funds are funded through bond issuances.
Right.
Um, and so you could almost, if, if, if you were to keep the property tax rate flat and you had, you would make assumption that thirty thousand dollars, which is on a bond issuance, is a pretty small principle of interest payment. It's a, it's, it's teeny. Um, but it, it lays out that, you know, maybe a road, maybe you get about two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollar, um, financing and that thirty thousand would, would pay, which, you know, that's, that's some, we're not, we're not many roads, but that would fix some critical ones.
Well, I just want to, I just want to wrap with, um, can we, can I just go ahead and throw in a plug for a future agenda item to not get lost, that we would, um, discuss entertaining, to make sure I'm clear here, to discuss entertaining the notion, the notion of having a financial advising firm or particular person come and, uh, give detailed explanations to the council as to what that would look like. This, in, in my, in my personal opinion, really falls back into the same line of, you know, are we going to continue to play like we're a city or are we going to be one? And you, 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 we just cannot be prepared for what a lot of people aren't thrilled about, but is inevitable that is coming our direction unless we take some steps right now. So I'd like to see that as a future agenda item, that we would discuss that item.
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I thought we were, we had a line item in the budget just for roads and that it's already been building up and that we were going to have to pay cash. Now, bonds we have to qualify for, correct? And so I thought we're building up the cash to be able to pay cash for these roads. And we're our engineering firm to, I mean, we're working on that today so that we can come up with a plan to maybe start on a road. I mean, I thought that was our plan. I, I, all this about bonds and getting new, finding firms and, um, you know, I'm just not sure we're ready for that financially. I mean, we have to.
I, I agree with you, Jan. Uh, uh, we do have a, we did, did have a plan, we're not going away from that. This, of course, goes out for five years, so that's what this whole issue is, is you go think about where we're going. So what he's proposed here is a baby step. You know, it's basically where we came from was we didn't put any money aside for real, real long-term capital improvements for, I don't know how long. We figured out how, how, based off of our perform, our financial performance in each year, to start stacking that up. And that's not changed, we still, we're still doing that. And we're probably, if, if we're lucky, maybe next year, we'll be ready to try to pull the trigger on one of those roads. Still paying as you go. All this is doing is saying, do we want to start planning for the future to do that up front? Once we start putting money away, still not got a bond, haven't gone out and taken a loan, but we pretending effectively like we're doing that, we're putting a certain amount of money away for those long-term things. At that point in time, then a council in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five could say, hey, you know, we're, we're doing this religiously, we're, we're, we're making this work, it's part of the budget, it's, it's in there, maybe we want to, at that point in time, we want to take the next step to go out and, and get some big money to go off and finish, finish taking care of those roads. But all we're, to say is, is should we stick that in there? Now, I'm a, I'm a fan of doing that, uh, in, in the, putting that into five-year plan. Whether it's thirty thousand dollars or not, I don't know. I think that's going to have to get down to the, the bottom line when we balance. But, uh, and I think what I heard was that Lisa was a fan of that. And I think what I heard is, Jan, that you're, you're nervous that, that we're even talking about this. But think about it some more and, and again, we're not committing anything other than proving to ourselves that we can go through this.
Yes.
And if I, if I may just.
Just a second. Just, just a minute. Uh, Sonia, you, you raised your hand.
Yes. So what I wanted to say, as I could tell you, as soon as this meeting is over, it's going to be on Facebook that the library has more money than the roads. After all of your explanation that you just gave to break it all down, what you just said, that's what somebody is going to end up saying. So hopefully everybody was paying attention and was following along with the plan that's actually going to take place with the five-year plan. The only thing that I would say, which I've heard, is that I know that there's thirty thousand in there right now. Is there any way that we amount thirty thousand to be, uh, decreased? And we have the, like, I would say if we could be twenty thousand and add ten thousand to the road?
Uh, you can, so right now, those are essentially, you can, if you reduce one dollar for one, you can add another dollar to another. So if the council wants to do that, but there's, there's no, there's no reason why we can't. So you're suggesting it was to reduce the, the transfer amount by ten thousand and increase the road maintenance by ten thousand?
Yes.
For, for this year? For the first year?
Yes. So what I would like to do, because with the thirty thousand, you said that we qualified for like a two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand?
That's, that's a rough ballpark.
Yes, like amount to do that. But it's like, we wanted to take like baby steps, like you said, even if we decreased it by ten thousand, that would still be within the ballpark range of a hundred thousand or a hundred.
Twenty, fifty, some, you know, you got, that's where we want to get a financial advisor who, who knows the, the charges about this because they also get, they skim from the top. Everybody in the process gets to skim. Uh, so you, in terms of the, with how much we could, if, finance, what our financing limit would be, um, for a given certain amount, they'd be able to provide that. I think the initial discussion would be, hey, what does financing look like? How does this work? What's the one, like, what's the, the basics on how, what this would be involved? Um, and then we can have a discussion about the money. I think the mayor's point, reducing that, to your point, reducing that, I think that makes sense as we, as we build out and give ourselves some time. But, um, having something in there, at least for the pay-go process that Jan was discussing, still makes sense. Yeah.
And if, if I may, I just wanted to clarify specifically with Jan. Um, as we went through three or so years ago, as we went through trying to decide which road, which streets in town were in the greatest need and we ranked them all and we went through all these workshops to determine what kinds of roads. So all of that work and energy and time was done three, four years ago and it's just now almost going to be realized. So to me, I just wanted to clarify specifically to you, Jan, is that this discussion is kind of like the work we did three years ago. It's just preliminary groundwork discussions for the possibility of the future. So I just want to be clear on my, my understanding.
I understand.
So I think what I heard from city council is, at least for the first year, go change this, the, um, transfer to twenty thousand and the road maintenance to fifty-six. And then for the remaining out years, do we want to make the FY twenty-two a five thousand dollars and go to zero?
Yes. I mean, that's what I would recommend. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
I'm, I'm on.
I'm on board.
Okay.
As, as we talked earlier, if you go in there and adjust some of the revenue numbers that are flatlined to, to, to be more, what's really going to happen, you get to add additional.
Right, right. There'll, there'll be more, more changes. So this is a good input. Um, the last part that we hadn't touched on is the parks. Um, you know, the, the increase of fourteen thousand FY twenty to, to nineteen thousand in the out, for each of the out years. Um, some of that is an accounting measure where we're taking money that was paying for, uh, property maintenance, mowing, and putting that under the park fund with, under the strategic plan to make more of that green space available for public use, uh, for possibly the parks. And so transferring that, that maintenance of that property to the parks and operations funding line, I think makes the most sense. And so that's why you see the increase there. There'll be, there's, there's a little bit on the edges of, of, you know, might be able to do more things, but it's mostly to maintain the FY twenty, uh, effort, but include more parking areas. Yes.
So with that being said, it says park operations and maintenance. And from hearing Sam speaking the last time, as with the park advisory, he was stating that he thinks that there needs to be a maintenance person. Would, if there was ever a maintenance person, would that amount not include it?
Um, the, the main, in terms of like garbage collection and pickup and those things, because right now, a lot of that's done by volunteers. If we were to assume those duties, we would likely need to increase that or decrease our rate of mowing, um, or other funds. Now, fourteen thousand, we're not going to spend all of that projected this year. Which, you know, we, and we've been mowing the parks even during the, the coronavirus shutdown, um, for the most part. So it's, fourteen thousand is still a healthy budget to maintain what we have and to make small improvements. So if we were to add a, um, service worker, likely under a contract scenario, to come in and pick up trash, it would come out of that budget. And some of those, some of that wiggle room would probably be eaten out. So that, some of the other items, I know that the parks committee was looking at, you know, stone blocks and such, there may not be as much of those sort of things available in the future.
I think the lead, the, the concept of that, I, 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 I think that we should, that should be on the ramp up as well. Because we are expanding the parks and because we're going to learn more about it. But we're still in our infancy of, of having a overall park master plan and etc. We made some good headway even just this past week in, in defining what phase one looks like, but we got phase two, phase three that's going to be a lift. Uh, and I do have a, you know, the volunteers have been taking care of parks, have really done, going over and above what anybody would ever expect of, of volunteers. I mean, they're down there picking up trash and, and watching over things and reporting issues and doing a lot. Uh, one of the, one of the things that will happen somewhere in the next five years, uh, maybe closer to this year than, than the other yet, is we're going to have to, if, if we're going to have these parks and we actually going to go get grants to go really make them look like parks that, if you see, you know, real nice parks that are around here with amenities and the like. Uh, there's going to have to be labor associated with that that the city's going to have to pick up. So that's why I think it'd be good to go increase that over time, uh.
As far as like including a grant writer or something, you know, you're going to be, have somebody to do, to be a grant writer, it would feel and come out of that line item as well?
Um, probably not. If we, if we were going after a grant writer, their, their fees oftentimes come out of the grant funds themselves. Um, some of the, some of the things we would do, uh, through the grant, i- if we were going to, you know, come up with engineering, architectural engineering or something, the landscaping, landscape architect, landscape architect. We had a landscape architect come in, that, some of that might be used as a park operation, the maintenance. But if it's looking towards make trails and, and significant investments, you could use the capital improvement fund for some of those.
I was going to say. Some of that stuff from the parks should come from the capital, uh, improvement fund.
It could, yes.
Not, not the maintenance, but the.
No, no.
The structure, I mean.
But the development of the creation here.
Thank you.
So to clarify about the parks and the mowing, that's not coming out of volunteers, is it?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No.
I just wanted to clarify that.
The, the, the discussion was, was the trash and, um, other groundkeeping that they, that we're not taking care of as the city volunteers are taking care of.
Yes, right.
Watering.
Watering.
Yes.
All right. Um, I think that, unless there's anything else on priority one, we'll go ahead to priority two.
Okay.
All right. So priority two was maintain community. Um, this really had to do with the planning and zoning space, uh, for the most part. One of the outcomes that came out of the planning process was wanting to beautify the community and one of the things was entrance signs. So.
Repeat that.
Here is, en- entrance signs.
Oh, entrance, thank you. I didn't, I couldn't hear that.
Yeah. Um, muffled because I'm wearing a face mask.
Oh, okay.
So the, the entrance signs, depending on what, what type of signs we want to put out there, you know, you can give them for a couple thousand or if you're doing a lot of masonry work, you're looking at tens of thousands. Um, some of these entrance, the entrance signs envisioned here are your typical welcome to Martindale sort of thing. Now, some signage could come out of the hotel tax fund, um, to direct towards, uh, frequently visited amenities within the city. So for example, the intersection near I thirty-five and highway eight, you, you'll see little green and blue signs directing you to the parks where the Gary softball field is and other things. Those are the type of signs you could probably use on a hotel tax fund. The big masonry sign that says Sam Marcus on it, that's like, that's likely to not come out. I'd be shocked if it came out of a hotel tax fund.
Well, what, what, before you get off of that, instead of saying welcome to Martindale, if it says welcome to historic Martindale, I'm not sure that it couldn't come out of there. And I'm pretty sure you even get real close to saying that, that believes legal if we are successful in getting that building and/or some of the other buildings in town on the list of national historic places. And I believe we would jump across the line and say, yes, we can do that. And, and that's what I'm kind of pushing.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's a great idea. It's definitely something that we're, we're looking into.
And, and personally, I think, I think, you know, there was a lot of, ten, eleven, twelve years ago, when that tax was put on our books, there was a lot of backlash about it. And I think, quite frankly, what a better way to sort of close that loop to actually put that signage out there based on, or, or coming from those funds that are supposed to be used for, quote, tourism, if you will. Um, I think that's a fantastic idea.
Uh, so Lisa's weighed in, Sonia, you weighed in on this one? Jan, you got anything you got, want, want to talk about here?
Well, I'm worried about using that hotel tax. You know, I'd like the, the attorney to look into it and make sure we're doing it correctly.
What's your concern?
Uh.
Do you want to, do you want to talk about?
Without having some kind of convention center or, or tourist bureau or something like that. I mean, I thought that we had to have some of that in order for us to be able to even spend it.
Any objection? Okay. Uh, so, so just, just real quick, my, my previous analysis on some other issues apply. Anyone have a problem with me talking with Jan about this, uh, outside of context of a meeting?
I, I have no problem. I would like to say one thing and in y'all's discussion, maybe you can answer this for her and then get back, what have you. Um, it was my understanding. Um, it was my understanding when it was established that if in fact the city chose to use those funds to print flyers or create, um, brochures as to what might be in town, that those funds could be used for that. So I, I never heard anything about we had to have a convention center before we could use those funds. That's it.
Could I go back and see that revenue on the hotel tax line? Just so I ring on myself.
Uh, there, there is no hotel. Well, let's, let's finish the discussion on that again. I think the, the question for you, for council member was, do you have an issue with Kent talking about the hotel tax agenda?
No, not at all. No, right ahead.
That, that, that's fine. I will remind y'all to go back to your, your information that you got on December tenth meeting. And we went over the laws and, and what the kind of plan was. And I'm sure Kent, that you'll, you'll share that with Jan again, but. We, we did go over those in detail with PML's input as well as Kent's input. And what we, what I, what, what we put in there was that if we, we, we could spend the funds on promoting artistic events and we could permit, use those funds on signage when it's supported. Like Jared quoted, uh, what was that thing right now? I don't know. You said it a while ago. Signs that promote.
Oh, to, uh, attractions that are frequently visited.
Frequently visited attractions. That, that's straight out of the statute. So, uh.
So you wouldn't mind me?
It's, it's, it's good to think about that. It, it certainly is, uh, we all need to be very comfortable with it. In the five-year plan, that's, that's where we would make potentially spend some of that hotel motel tax money. On signage. And the next one coming up is another one that explains kind of thing for that money.
And then I, I think for, like, if Kent and council members also want to talk about that because he already gone over it, then they could do it at another time. But I really would like to stick to the agenda of what we have, just that being like it.
Yeah, okay. That, Jan, you said that was okay, right?
Okay with me. I mean, no, but as far as communicating with Kent.
Outside of his.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, I think that one, that's that one up. Um, Sam's question happened to be, you know, we can, we can look at this one thing. And if, if there's a line item on there for that, so.
All right. Uh, priority three, this is the economic development planning, uh, work. So you'll see on here, there's two line items, develop a comprehensive master plan. Um, one of the notes is, we're, we're going to try to see if we can get that comprehensive master plan funded through the hazard mitigation block grant program. Um, the, the state in their action plan and use of funds, um, includes a resilient community scope. And then under that resilient community that funds things such as, uh, comprehensive master plans that take into account, uh, frequently flooded areas and, and will do it for the whole, whole city. So we're going to, for now, I'm not, I think my suggestion is to not put any funds towards that until we see if that gets covered on the grant. Again, it's a one percent match, and I think we can cover that on a year to year. The second line item on there is a city sponsored grant. Um, the, the thought process, and we discussed this some, some months ago, was mostly to kickstart discussion on ways we can improve the business climate and improve the, lower the barrier of entry for businesses in, in London. Um, and the thought here is have some sort of city provided matching grant where landowner, business and city would all provide equal share up to, you know, five thousand dollars on, in the given year. Um, that would be a competitive application that they put in. And it would go towards improvements that would be long lasting. So, um, air conditioning or, uh, offset some of the cost of a, of a remodel. Um, you know, that could go to like the, the Bagley Bar, something down here. Wherever there's a commercial space, um, that, e- even existing commercial space could have, that has a business with a market. I, I was using this as a way to try to get some outside the box thinking, get some things kicking around on ways that the city can, and as a government can invest back into the city to, to help businesses stick around them. And if they can't, the next business that comes, lower that barrier for them to start a business in the city.
So with that, who wants the way it is? Let's start with you, Lisa.
Well, I definitely know we need one as far as a, a comprehensive master plan. Um, that's all, that's, that's all I have at the moment.
All right. Jan, you got anything you want to talk about here?
Yeah, I think I need more information. Uh, I mean, it sounds, you know, like it's good, but yeah, I, I have some questions. I would love to maybe ask, uh, Jared later, if that's all right.
Well, and we don't, we don't know what, what the other, I mean, this is, this is our opportunity to find out what other council members are thinking.
Yeah, this, this is admittedly, it's, it's currently half-faked. You know, this is more to spur discussion. This is not a definitive proposal. Um, this, and, and the future year's spend plan, as we noted earlier, is an aspirational document. It does not commit us to do anything in a budget. Serves as a baseline, but it doesn't commit any funds. It doesn't do any of these things. But it sets a priority that we try to achieve in the future. So if there's still discussion on this, now's not the right time to do it. You can always, you can consider zeroing out the FY twenty-one year and including something in the out years, once we've had more time to, to look into it. Um, and we can, go ahead.
Did, did you say now is the right time to, to clarify?
So if, in the future, if we wanted to not include the five thousand dollars that aside in FY twenty-one, we could zero out that, that amount within the future year's spend plan. Kick that can down the road, give ourselves about a year to, to think it over some more. Uh, but I do think it's worth having something, it doesn't have to be a commerce grant. It, it could just be a placeholder of a T V D. But something where we're doing, we're taking a, an affirmative action towards improving the, the economic development within the city.
And is this, is this, is this and or would this be the appropriate time to, to, to outlay potential possibilities with the Greater San Marcos, um, partnership? Information that we have learned. Would you like to share that?
Yeah, so the Greater, Greater San Marcos Partnership is an economic development corporation. Um, that's funded by Hayes County, Caldwell County, and the City of San Marcos. The, under the contract that the corporation has with Caldwell County, Martindale has certain benefits. That includes advertising on their website, including real estate, uh, commercial real estate opportunities, includes, um, other advertising and outreach. So the Economic Development Corporation, what they do is they have their ear to the ground for companies who want to come in, such as the Smart Fund. They'll, they'll look for businesses who are considering relocating, help them get in touch with cities and counties to pursue possibly relocating or starting a business. We're able to put Martindale on the path for, for that purpose with the, with that development corporation.
And Jared, if I, if I may jump in for just a second, I'm sorry, because I have a feeling that others are not fully aware. When the Greater San Marcos Partnership was discussed, um, a month, a couple of months or so ago, um, the biggest question was and concern from other, um, council members, including the mayor, was if in fact the city had to come out of our pockets to be a part of that, then we weren't necessarily interested. So I just want to make certain that, that, that you and or I have clarified that the county pays and the county has paid and we are actually included at no cost. I want to make that clear. I want to make that clear. Thank you.
I would like to chime in, but, but if you could take their pictures off, I'd like to read, finish reading. So right there it says, um, so it would be a city sponsored grant. Um, also what right there it says, it could be a nonprofit organization whose activities improve commerce. So the, the non-profit would have to bring commerce in there. So it would essentially have to be something like in the arts or galleries or something like that.
Yeah, that would be, or, or even a, if the business is yours, but do a chamber of commerce. This could be, you know, worked through a chamber of commerce as well. Uh, but yeah, if, if someone had an nonprofit for, you know, painting, sculpture, whatever, and they wanted to use that as a, the way to improve commerce activities in the downtown area, that, I mean, they could potentially apply to it. It wouldn't have to be just a business. It could be a, a, a nonprofit.
But yeah, so with the nonprofit, the way that it says, the activities would have to bring commerce to the city, but the nonprofit would actually be able to, you know, because there's a nonprofit entity.
Right, but there's, there's plenty of nonprofits that can put on programming, that creates street, that puts on, that creates foot traffic, you know, like the museum was the B one. Um, some of those things, uh, museum was in one area where hotel taxes could be used again. Um, not everything can be used for hotel taxes, as we know, but that's, that's another area. If there was a, um, movies in the green space or movies in the park, and it was a, a weekly event, and it drew vendors and people to visit and, uh, free patron our, our businesses, they could, they could apply for something.
So I would, I would like to see the money, I know that you stated you could like take it out and live it. I would like to see it stay there.
You would like to see what?
He'd like to leave it there instead of taking it out.
No, I think, I, it, it's okay to leave it in there for, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, you know, it's a good idea. People have to apply for it. Uh, where you're talking about businesses and nonprofits would have to apply for it through the city, correct?
Correct. And we, we would come up with a, we'd have to figure out the whole program, that what kind of contract language would be required with that. There's a lot of, a lot of work that go into it. You know, how, how the city capital.
I think, I, I think just keeping it as a, as a line item in this, in this hypothetical, uh, five-year spend plan is a good way to not let this particular bit of information get lost.
Okay.
So that's good.
Any other discussion on, on this? And then the last one, uh, priority four, this is management and public services. This is where the rest, rest of the budget lies. Um, there are a number of items in here. This, these are going to reflect those items that we'll be going over once we get to the, to the budget. Here, what we're looking at is the out year, um, amounts as we go through operations and maintenance, essentially, operations and services. So you'll see increases in payroll. Um, those are, they are a function of the three percent escalation. Um, and then also looking at bringing on, I think it's a police officer. Have to go back. Twelve. Yeah. That's largely because of the, the inflation that's, that's going.
But it, now we already watched this stuff about bringing on another police officer?
We have not. Um, what, one of the things that we're considering is there's, there's a grant out there that allows you to bring on a rookie, um, and the first year's paid, the next year's, um, a twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent match with the grant being seventy-five percent. And it goes down by twenty-five percent from there. So by the time it's a four, a four years, you're paying the full cost of, of that person. That's something that we're looking at in a way to increase, um, patrol hours. Right now, we don't, we do not have a lot of coverage on the weekends and in the evenings. Um, we're, we're, we've gotten better in some areas, um, with our part-time staffing model that we, that we've transitioned to. But one of the areas that the strategic plan process came out was people would like to see, have more police presence coverage, um, more twenty-four seven of the day. So in order to do that, we would likely need to bring on more staff than, than we have now.
Of course, our, our, our planning process is this, just a budgetary activity every year. And so, uh, we were down at one, one police officer in, through twenty eighteen. And then twenty eighteen, we picked up a second officer, so we had two. And we maintained that two in the budget and since then, although the names have changed, we still are at two equivalent officers. We've got, as Jared pointed out, uh, instead of having, uh, two official officers equals two forty-hour-a-week people. Uh, we now have several other officers all working part-time for the added forty hours a week as, as a second officer. We've never really talked at out years, appealed this about what happens in the future, except when we come to budget time. And so the budget for twenty twenty-one still has those two in it. Does not have a third one yet. But as we look out, I would expect that we would want to go to a third at some point in the future. And then potentially, you know, out there it's way go to, I mean, based off of the inputs we got out of the survey, police patrols and police act, you know, safety, public safety kind of thing were pretty high on the list. They weren't the highest, but they were, they were pretty high on the list. So the community, I think, feels like, you know, more is better. So as we, as, as you pointed out, we've been talking to, Harry, Harry kind of had to do about this, this program that allows you to share the cost with the state and rural communities, that allows you to get one and they, they give your money to help offset the first year, second year, third year, fourth year. We've been, we told them to go, go investigate it. We missed the window for, for this coming year. So if we're going to do it, it's out in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two for the first, first year round, or something like that. And that just makes it more affordable for us. Uh, you'll see when we get to the budget, we're talking about trying to upgrade our fleet a little bit so that there's, that there's enough vehicles to go around. So we're moving toward being prepared to say, hey, let's, it's time, let's go get us a third police officer. But right now, it's FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
But that right there, that budget number, that's for all of our positions, correct?
That's, that's all of our staff, all of our state staff, including the utility clerks, um, and the court.
So in other words, we're just, uh, we're, we're thinking about, uh, add. So in other words, we're just, we're thinking about adding another police officer to the force.
Not anytime soon, at least not in the budget. It's something that we're kicking around. It could possibly fit in in those future years. Right now, it's a 3% increase year over year, straight-line increase. So when you get out to that year, that gets to be a bigger number. And the thought is, we could possibly, under those increases, we could probably fit in this grant payment. Now, depending on what year we go in, you're going to have a different, you're going to have different costs bubble in. So if we did it real soon, by 2025, you're paying for at least half of that salary. So you're going to see that number rise a little more than what's shown.
What you thought, you skipped off, Dan, were we going to be at two forever?
Well, I'd like to go have more police force. But, you know, the payroll alone takes, what, two-thirds of our total budget?
Not unusual.
I know, I know. So, you know, I think that we, I mean, we are going to need some additional law enforcement, so, I mean, we kind of need to work on that. Even if we get a grant, is that just going to be baby steps for the budget until we can afford it? Is that what
Right.
Brian to do right now? Okay.
Yeah, we're looking into the grant, trying to understand when the application process is, the mechanics behind it, the reimbursement, you know, how does it all work, when does it all work? What's the timeline to bring people in? So it's probably, until the city starts seeing costs, probably not till FY 23, I think at the soonest. Because we're likely won't get placed until 22. That's the first year, maybe 21, but probably not till 22, that's the first year, which is free. 23 would be a 25% of their salary to the region. That's not a whole lot of money for a junior officer in this region. That salary, payroll expenses, that's a quarter of it, maybe $10,000. That, you know, maybe a little bit more, but it's 10 to 15. So in that first year, it's not a huge user rate.
Yeah, I know, that sounds good. I just would like to see if we could get something, you know, another officer sooner.
If I may just throw something in. Anyone that knows me, I tend to look at things in a much bigger picture than what's right in front of my nose. And based on this specific conversation and the other strategic priorities that we've discussed, just in the last month, I had a resident, a new resident, share with me that a friend had said, hey, you've bought property in Martindale. I'd like to buy property there also. And this person said, you know, they don't have everything figured out yet. And security and police force is not quite what it needs to be. I've had some things stolen and some security issues. And literally dissuade somebody from buying property. So I'm all on board and I'm looking at it more in a bigger picture because it's all-encompassing. I don't say that to discuss the nature of what I've just described. I say that to pinpoint the bigger picture. And not just the infrastructure, but having a solid police force is critical. People want to live where they feel safe, period.
All right, something we need to think about in the future. Okay.
Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I would think that whenever we get to actually talking about it, like a workshop or something like that, we're looking at all aspects with part-time versus full-time versus adding somebody else with a grant, and then that way we could like discuss it further.
Yeah. Definitely will. The other operating expenses, that's there's a number of account items that go into that. Printing costs are day-to-day operate lights. So this is kept fairly low straight.
What did you say?
It's kept fairly flat now, kept straight now. Not a lot of change there. I don't think that's a significant item. Professional service fees, these funds are attorney, engineer, auditor, inspector, those increasing at a slight rate year over year. The municipal court costs, that should likely come down. We'll have to look at that one again. That is a little high to me. I think we had a subscription service, possibly Lexus Nexus, that had a significant cost. So that, I don't think we're paying for anymore because we haven't been getting use out of it. So that might come down some.
Isn't that a subscription for their software?
Yeah, there's a software subscription that they're no longer Yeah, there's a software subscription that they're no longer using.
Do you know the name of that one?
I think it was Lexus Nexus.
There was, Lexus Nexus was a way of looking people up, going through the law enforcement side. It was a, how do you find Joe? So the guy has a ticket, he doesn't pay, you gotta go track him down, da-da-da-da-da. They found out that there are other search tools that are just as easy and they're free and they quit using it in the courts and they're just using what the free stuff, so we cut that off.
Good. We appreciate that.
Yep.
Law enforcement training operations, this is maintained pretty flat. We'll have to relook at that. There's a budget item that we included this year regarding police vehicle. I'll have to make sure we have the right lines of accounting. So we might update this line item in a future revision. The property and equipment, you'll notice that there's the reduction. So as the parks went up, the property maintenance line item went down. That's what you're seeing there. IT services was higher this last year because of purchasing the equipment in this room and also laptop refresh that needed to happen, computer refresh that needed to happen. We don't expect those same expenses this year. But you'll see in the out-years, 21, 22, 23, likely going through another round of computer refresh purchasing.
That also includes the website and the IT services, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, Versio's our current provider and our website.
Which is Civic Plus.
Right.
Yes, Civic Plus.
And what is, I'm just completely curious, what is this ability, this new technology we have to be able to have these types of meetings? What does that cost us? And is that included?
So we're, it's, I think $100 for a year subscription. And we're doing this on a street stream. I haven't reached out to a vendor to start market research on what it would take to get more professional equipment in here. So I'm not, we're not using a cell phone and a computer, using a Polycom type.
I can, in the old school, like we used to, what do you call it? Record the radio with our cassette tapes to make a playlist.
Okay.
Anyway, sorry. Go ahead.
So you did get new equipment for the, for this, for us to be able to zoom in?
No, not for you to zoom in, but for the room. Right now, you'll see, the room is set up right now with a secondary laptop. So we're running two laptops in the room. One of them pointed at the city council spaces. So you can see me.
All I can see is Sonia.
Right, so yeah, so if we were to get
There you go.
Up on a wall, that would look down and be able to see the whole table. You get better audio with a spider phone type of system with different audio pickups. So that way, if this continues, we'll have better quality meetings hopefully.
Okay. Baby steps.
Looking at what?
Looking into it, doing the market research right now, see what that would cost us.
Good, thank you.
The other item here is the emergency fund and other small expenses that creep up. So the emergency fund, I believe, is nearly fully funded.
We're at 207 with, we've done this year, is that right?
It's over 200.
I think we're at 207. We hit it at 250, so another year it'll be 220, 230. We've got about three years to get there.
Right, so that, the goal, as I understand, was to get to 250,000. Many cash on hand emergency funds is for 90 days operations. Our budget right now is, you know, 880. So we're going 25% of that. We're, that's about 220. And so with another payment through our emergency fund, we're about where we would want to be. Anything above that is kind of gravy. So that's why I zero this out. This is also helping pay for that capital improvement fund. So this is, I think it's an area that I would like to come for the way in on, whether that's what you want to do. The goal has been to try to reach the 250,000 mark. I guess the proposal I'm putting out there with this is going to a 220 type of mark and start funding for the future. That's, that's the statement.
So if y'all recall, the way we got to 250 was, we said, oh, we need some emergency money. How much do we need? Somebody said, well, how about 160 or 180,000? Somebody said, let's pay 200,000. Somebody else said, let's pay you 250,000. This was right after we were coming out of no cash, et cetera. But there wasn't a lot of, much, there's not a lot of science in the numbers that we picked. It was more of a feel-good number. I don't have any problem with heading with the 250,000 myself. I mean, I like checking achievements and achieving them. It doesn't have to be that big. When we have the flood, you know, if we have a disaster, which is going, will be a flood, the immediate cash needs are for big dumpsters to help people get rid of their stuff and get the house painted out and do some road repair, do some sewer repair, okay? A hundred thousand dollars probably would come along there. The real scary one for me is if something ever went wrong with the waste treatment plant out there, that could turn into some big bucks in a hurry. So between those two, 250, you shatter like a really safe number. That's just me. If the council wanted to back off some, I might be screaming, please don't. So with that way in, so what?
So if we did, if we went with the 220, with the 30, we could apply that in another area?
Yeah, so in this, it's already been done. So by, assuming no more future payments after this year, and that $15,000 that we've been putting in every year at the end of the year would go towards the capital improvement fund. That's not exact math. We're making sure $15,000 gets added. How much is coming out of our actual general fund? Is a product of interest that we're earning on the savings we currently have. And so we get $2,000 in interest on what was in there. We'll only put in 13,000. But all total, the 15,000 commitment is being sold into that. So it's not exact math, but for this purposes, it was zero, the emergency fund was zeroed out and went to the capital improvement fund, attention. Did I get that right, Juan?
Hey.
So that's the 30.
That's where the, there's no 30. The 30, yeah, yeah, that's where the $30,000 you saw earlier, capital improvement fund, it was the emergency fund and the road management.
Well, I think we need to put it in emergency management for a couple more years at least.
Well, don't we have a different avenue that's funding that still?
No.
No? Okay.
Those sales do, the same as the tolls, yeah.
Say that again?
I mean, it would continue to, you know, gain interest. Currently, not a whole lot. The interest rates are pretty low. We're not earning a lot of money on it right now. But there's no other funding mechanism that we'd have set up for the emergency fund.
And what was the number you wanted to start putting in the capital fund?
The total, so if we go back to that tab, we changed it.
Do you remember what it was?
It was $20,000
Okay.
For FY 21.
Yeah.
And we applied in the roads to that 36.
Right. Okay. But that doesn't mean that we still, we don't, so you're thinking about taking, instead of paying to the emergency fund, put it into the capital management fund?
Capital improvements.
I mean, capital improvement?
Yes. Since, a lot of times, the emergency cash on hand is at least, it's the same operation for 90 days. It's kind of a rule of thumb. There's no right or wrong answer on it. There is a wrong answer if it's zero, and there's a wrong answer if there's a million dollars, right? You don't want, if you're putting too much money in it, then you're not giving the benefit to the taxpayer who gave you all that money. So there's a balance though. I think we're nearing that balance. And so that's why I'm bringing it up for discussion. As a rule of thumb, we could stop doing that now.
Well, lower it. I'd be okay with lowering it. Not completely getting away with it. I mean, our goal originally was 250. So I kind of, I mean, we can change it.
And the mayor was stating that as well, I think. You were saying, keeping the goal at 250 is where you would like to see it.
And where are we in that, in that goal?
We're two
207,000 change.
207?
207.
Okay, so this is, this is just my thought process. This only gives more credibility to the fact when it comes to capital improvements that we need to entertain some type of outsourced funding so that we can have literal cash on hand to fund our own emergency situations. In other words, the emergency fund. Again, that's kind of a big picture thought, but that doesn't create any kind of answer to what we are discussing, but to me, that's a factor.
So I would just like to know, Mayor, like in previous, like have the emergency fund, if there's been more funds generated than there was previously, correct?
Yeah, when we, let's see, back in 20 Yeah, when we, uh, let's see, back in, uh, twenty fifteen or so, there was eighty-eight thousand dollars in there. Then we had the flood, and they used up a lot of that, but just got put back.
Yeah.
Started out about eighty thousand dollars, and it's grown to, to two oh seven now, so.
So I think, I mean, I think we're out of this place. I know that you wanted to, you know, see it go all the way to two fifty, but if we could do the two, two twenty and still, you know, credit.
We could take a hybrid approach too, as, as, as Councilmember Buck, Buck was saying is, um, don't, don't zero it out, but maybe not do the full amount. We, we could, uh, put us on life path, still reach the two fifty number and just not have our capital improvement fund be quite assigned, so, you know, bring capital improvement fund down to five thousand and emergency fund five thousand.
I'm gonna have to agree with that fact that we did set a goal of that two fifty. And if we are, you know, um, that close to it, I think we need to, I think in this particular five-year spending plan, I think we need to have achieved that goal by the end of the five years.
So maybe that's the answer.
All right.
Uh, go, go, go and take, you know, go to get there, five to five, put it on the line, uh, get two fifty at the end and you can all.
Yeah. Back it down, back it down and figure out your dollars.
All right, we'll do that. Um, rest of this was utility expenses, and those are, are fairly set. Those aren't be updated, uh, with the contract cost instead of a, um, inflationary assumption. So another utility expenses, but it's knowing other things that creep up. So there'll, there'll be more updates on those items in the future. Um, and I think unless there's any more discussion on a future spend plan, we didn't, we did not go through, this is built out, this spreadsheet is built out with a line-by-line accounting, just like it's in the budget. The purpose of the discussion, and since we're going to discuss the budget anyways, I did not do that tonight. I did this already for the summary of those items. Um, if there's any discussion that you saw on any of these particular items, we can discuss them now. Otherwise, we can move on to the next agenda item.
Uh, I think what I heard is, is that you, you got a number of things, but one of the things we started out with is, was when you get to the end, you need to balance. Then have to balance into, into the years, over the five years, you need to balance, at least. If you bet me, it's a mine, mine could look like things, you could balance years, but it's not. And if you do that, there's other things that we discussed now, and then we're ready to go, go bring in for a real. This, tonight's agenda item is discussion, I only could do exactly what we did. Uh, at some point in time, after you, you massage the numbers, et cetera, you can bring it back.
Yep.
Say this is, this is the way it played out, have the balance with, uh.
Yeah.
And then talk about anything that didn't happen exactly the way that you heard. And I'm, I'm happy with that. Everybody else can live with that? Uh, anybody can't live with that, say something. Going once, going twice, moving on.
All right. So the next discussion item is the review of the draft budget. Um, we're going to go through the budget Excel file that we have. And the purpose of tonight is to obtain council input on the annual budget. Um, and just as a preview, we will, we're going to be discussing, uh, tax rates. And so for those of you on, online or in the room, we'll likely be referencing slide four once we start getting into the discussion regarding the property taxes. Pulling it up now, just give me a second.
So for the council's point, of course, we sit this thing out, uh, as a read ahead. Today's the day that we gotta go really set the, what we want to be our proposed budget. We're not going to vote on it, but today's the day to have all the discussion and, and make changes if you say there's too much there, not enough there. Et cetera. Uh, we, our plan, of course, calls for, our schedule calls for a, a public hearing for a week from today to present to the public, get their inputs, um, as far as the proposed plan. And then, uh, on the September eighth meeting, uh, is when we will leave to go vote on that, so.
All right, so there, there are a number of things I want to point out that make sure we're all oriented to the data that's, that's in here. We want to notice a few, a few items that may be peculiar. One, you'll see a proposed budget and an alternate proposed budget. The reason why we have these two discussion items is because if we do not have a holdover council member when it comes time to adopt the tax rate, then by state law, we have to maintain the no new revenue rate. And throughout the budget, we included both, we included that alternative. So the proposed budget is based off of the property tax rate that we'll discuss tonight. The alternative budget is if we do not have a fourth holdover council member when we go to adopt the budget and the, the tax, uh, rate, we're going to be stuck with it. The delta is about nine thousand dollars.
Can you, Jared, can you, can you clarify just for the record, um, to whomever may be on this call and/or watching in the future, uh, what exactly you mean by if we do not have a holdover council member?
Yes, so in order to adopt the tax rate, you have to have four aldermen or four council members present. The, the mayor does not count towards that quorum. Currently, we only have three council members serving, two have resigned. We're allowed to, in these circumstances, use what they call a holdover. Basically, a, a council member who's been elected but is not actively serving due to resignation. They can participate in the, um, tax rate setting as, as they could achieve that quorum. So if we do not have a holdover, um, for the, for that budget, sorry, got a warning here from Zoom. If we do not have a holdover council member when it comes time to adopt the tax rate in the budget on September eighth, the delta is a nine thousand dollars less in our budget than we would have otherwise. Because we will not be able to adopt a, 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 a higher tax rate other than the no new revenue rate carried forward from last year. Essentially, we can make changes within our budget, but we can't make changes for our revenue line. Well, property tax revenue line.
So just, just to be very elementary clear, if in fact Mike McClabb and/or Mary Paul do not show up next week on the twenty-fifth.
No, on the, on the eighth.
On the, on, on September eighth, if, if Mike McClabb and/or Mary Paul do not show up on September the eighth, then, then we have to use this alternate budget, which is nine thousand dollars less.
Correct.
Thank you for your explanation.
And I will get into why that is when we look at the tax rates. Uh, but for now, you have two, you have two columns listed, you know, that's the difference. You'll also notice that the funds are, are, there are more funds than we had previously. Some things such as the hotel tax and a portion of our, of our sales tax that's dedicated specifically for road maintenance and repair are essentially restricted funds. The, the, the use of those funds is restricted. We, we run into this with the court, um, as well, and it might be something that you're familiar with. The problem was, those funds were, those fund account line items were in our general fund. And so if we did not have our revenues of restricted revenues equal our restricted spend, the general fund would artificially show a budget surplus. Um, and it, and it could impact us. So when, when I was working on the budget this year, proposing to use a special revenue fund, which is a term that's frequently used by other cities, to account for those restricted fund uses, so we can better balance our budget and we don't run into an area where we're either accounting surpluses or deficits in a restricted account. You'll see that listed here. Um, any questions on that?
I thought.
Let, let me, let me try to extract, explain this one. In the past, we had used bank accounts to keep the restricted stuff segregated. We're not planning on changing that. But when you come to talking to auditors and the others, it is, coming just straight out of the general fund, there's a lot of hand waves that goes along with that. So Jared came up with this idea that if we went and put, actually, I think he went correctly, if I'm wrong, but I believe he went off of research what other cities do.
Correct.
How they handle this, because they have the same problem, but it's just a much bigger.
Much bigger numbers.
And so the way they did that is they, they suck all the restricted stuff out into its own, uh, fund. Effectively, another one in, in, in the, um, bridgeless fund. And that's what he's trying to go do here. We're not really changing how we spend it. We're not changing so much how we, uh, collect it. We are simply changing how we report it.
Right, and if you look in the, in the past, if we go back to eighteen and nineteen axles, um, at our twenty budget and projected, you'll notice deficits and surpluses that's balancing across our restricted fund accounts and our non-restricted accounts. So it's, for example, in our, our twenty twenty budget, if we had set this up previously, we would have likely have seen that while our budget was at net balance, by breaking things out, we're, we're actually balancing across funds. And so this, this is an effort to correct that.
So that in the future, we won't see those, those deficit numbers?
Correct, well, you, you wouldn't have seen the deficit because it's balanced and hidden within the budget. Because you don't, your, your expenses aren't equaling your revenue, um, and so it's all getting mixed up. And so what we're, what we're doing here is having our hotel tax restricted revenues separated from our rest of our sales tax. And our sales tax for road maintenance separates from the rest of our, of our sales tax. And court restricted funds outside of our general fund accounts. That way, we, we're keeping track of it fine in our bank accounts and in quick books, but in our budget, it's where the numbers are getting messed up. So there hasn't been anything irregular to this point in terms of how we're accounting for it, but our budget process, it, it can lead to some faulty assumptions.
Go, go back to that, that, the sum, the, the bottom line.
Yeah.
For, for instance, uh, highlight the hall fund, all the lines. Okay, so, so what, what's happened in the past several years is, is we get to the end of the year, and we've got more revenue that came in than we planned, and we got less expenses than we planned, and boy, we said, boy, we did a good job. And there's X number of dollars left over, okay? And we sucked off a good chunk of that and put it in the capital improvement, long-term capital improvement fund. And I said, we've done a good thing. So if you, if you can see the string, I guess they can, the, the ninety-eight thousand in twenty eighteen, the seventy-six thousand at the, uh, in nineteen, both of those are, are good numbers, but the problem that, that Jared's having, and we all have, is, is that the special revenue stuff is restricted. So we can't take off that, that fourth grand of restricted stuff and stick it over in the long-term capital improvement plan because it's restricted. We, we, we gotta use it for what it's intended for. You don't have to use it in the same year, but you gotta use it for what it's intended for. And so he's trying to come up with a way where we don't, that, that we plan for understanding those numbers on the way in instead of on the way out. Uh, what we've done the past several years, before we ever moved anything into the long-term capital improvement plan, Wayne and I went back and we, we did exactly what he's doing here, just off on the side, go, just say, okay, let's go get all these accounts that are restricted, see how much came in revenue-wise, let's go see how much went out expense-wise, and make sure we don't go move that money into the long-term capital improvement plan. We went over that with this council in November of last year, uh, I don't know if y'all remember it, but there was a, you know, a slide that talked about these, these different years. The real one that we were worried about was the, was the court restricted activities, because those are merged. But as we get hotel tax stuff merged in here too, and other things, it was beginning to get complicated instead of just one or two items to worry about it and not. So he's proposing that we go off and, and suck that stuff out into a separate fund just for visibility so that we never, that people that come behind us in the future don't ever get in with this issue of, well, do we use it for what it's supposed to be used for or not? This should help leave an audit trail for that.
Yeah, for example, in, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we're looking at seven thousand, twelve thousand dollars, most of it court restricted. Um, coming into FY twenty and now into FY twenty-one, those numbers are increasing substantially because of the hotel tax particularly. Uh, and then also trying to maintain a better awareness of our, uh, sales tax, um, solid measure, I guess you call it, that, that has a certain amount of our sales tax dedicated to street and over there.
And if I'm, if I'm.
I didn't, I didn't, and we could probably put it together, but it's also because it's a new fund type. And so I didn't want to, wasn't sure, I want to talk with the auditor about how we transfer a line of accounting from a general fund to, to a separate fund and maintain that traceability in our year's product. So I figured it would probably be easier to let that line run out. Um, and it's part of a new line within the separate fund, and then we can always compare the two across the funds. But we can probably re, reattach our lines to that, so. Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you, and I just want to say again, and every time I see this in my, in my head, I'm just going to speak it out so that hopefully others will begin to see, um, some of the things I do. Big picture wise, what I heard and what I see with, um, this little bit of accounting restructuring, at the end of the day, we will potentially make our third-party auditors not have to spend extra time and our dollars digging for the information that they need. So I say, good job.
Oh, yeah, it, it, it'll probably create some efficiencies there. I don't think it's going to be a, a huge windfall of savings, but there's probably some efficiency there.
You know what, even if the dollars don't change, um, i- it's potential that they could in the future, just because things are cleaner. So I appreciate.
All right, so I think that's, let's go ahead and start then with the revenue side. Um, I want to give, I think it was worthwhile to discuss what's happening on, on the balance sheet before we start getting into this. So on the revenue side, we'll start with our, with on top, which is the utility fund. And, you know, I want to try to get my screen cooperating. Um, all right, so again, we have our budget, our alternate budget, no impact on the utility fund side as it is a, sign packed by property taxes. So for our wastewater service fees, this is a bottoms-up estimate calculation of the contract, uh, prices and where we, we are. Not contract prices, our, uh, so script, our ordinance prices and rates and our current customer base across different usage. So that's, that's why you see that a slight increase is, um, changing customer base. And I think the, the rate calculation changed in there, I don't think it's. I don't think it did. It's, there's no rate change, it's just the customer change.
If y'all recall, the wastewater rates are set based off of water usage in December, January, and February. And we kicked the new rates into gear on October first. Of course, we set the original budget for this year before October first, before we had those. Actually, I think we had them. So next year's budget, assuming that those water usage rates are the same from year to year, that's the only thing that really can impact this too much. If we lost a bunch of customers, in other words, people food, the house that idol, that could impact it. We did not play into any kind of planned increase in customers. No, yes, no, we did not. So the only gotcha in that wastewater thing is if the water usages changed dramatically and went down dramatically, people used less water in December, January, and February, then we will stop that, and that's going to impact it. I think that's pretty low risk.
I think so. Yeah, Lisa.
Yeah, just for clarification purposes, we basically request information from the water company for the months of December, January, and February. So for example, upcoming December twenty twenty, January and February of twenty-one. We take that information, and it will not be until October of twenty-one that the assessment from those three months become effective, is that correct?
Yes, if we're looking ahead, for this budget cycle, we look at the rates, the water usage in January, February of twenty twenty, to set the twenty-one budget.
Okay, for budget purposes, not actuals?
Not actuals.
No, that's maybe what we ought to do, but basically, I think we did that for the last years, and I believe we used, Dwayne tells me about all, we used that same number for the, what you're looking at here on the screen.
Yeah, I haven't gotten the break in yet. Not rates, the usage.
But by October first, we will have done that and adjusted.
I think we should do that, before we finalize the budget.
Really, it's just people around the category, it's really not material change.
Yeah, I know there's, like, one Z and two Z customers that had a large rate increase of last year for whatever reason, so.
Jared, can you repeat what Dwayne said?
Yeah, he was saying that the change, wasn't the cusp between the twenty budget and the twenty-one budget? You haven't taken the water usage rates from this calendar's, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're using nineteen's usage rates.
I guess so.
So he's using nineteen's usage rate, so we're going to update that.
But it would, you're going to update it, but it won't be effective until October one?
Correct, but it'll help our budget, because I know that there is one Z and two Z customers that had a significant usage that was higher than what we would expect for standard residential use, so.
That happens every year.
Yeah, it could balance itself out, not be an issue, but we're looking, you know, over the course of a year, thousand, two thousand, probably not much more than fifty hundred dollars.
Well, it's basically the difference in your bill being fifty dollars and ninety dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll get the updated rates and get that number. So that number may change, the ninety-four thousand may change slightly, not by a whole lot, but it may be updated.
Okay, thank you.
On the solid waste, which I started to speak about incorrectly previously, on the solid waste, we took their contract rate and applied the math to them. And so, I guess, our current number of customers, the type of customers that we have, to develop this number. This number's pretty solid, because of that, unless we have more customers get added or change their services.
There are actually-
Decreasing customers?
Not in customers, but people saying, oh, no longer need to pay.
Repeat, repeat what he's saying.
Dwayne was saying that there have been some customers that have decreased their level of service. Instead of having two cans or carts, they only have one cart. So there'll be some change in that.
But that's reflected.
Franchise fees at the bottom up from our solid waste in our utility funds. The service late charges, this is an estimate based on fire actuals and projections. Again, that's on the revenue side, so it's better to be a hair low than a hair high. A credit card usage fee, that's, again, looking at prior year actuals and projections. It could be, again, higher the year, next year, as the coronavirus continues and more people pay online and over the phone with their credit card. But it's better to be a hair low than a hair high. And then write-offs uncollected, this is a budget item to account for any write-offs that we may have. Three thousand's what we used last year, maybe a little high. We cut it to save for discussion tonight.
We've got that program going on.
Yeah, yeah, so this write-off collection, it would help allow for people who ask for assistance during the coronavirus pandemic, who might have lost a job. We're doing an abatement, kind of payment, payment plan program. And if they're, if they're, for some reason, unable to pay back on that program, then this is where the funding comes from.
Okay, and that sort of segues into the question that I feel is sort of drawn to go back to. I'm not trying to open any particular conversation, but on our line fourteen that's on the screen, the credit card usage fees, you know, our budget was a thousand dollars, and we're projecting at fifteen hundred, obviously, that's a result of people making payments online at, what, three eighty-one or something to pay your bill online. Is, that sort of goes into what I was going to ask is, how have we, as a city, given opportunity for those who need a little relief other than come talk to me and whomever the powers that be make decisions whether that person gets a reprieve and a payment plan or not? But would that service fee even be an option? Just, that's just, I'm just totally curious.
So the steps that we've taken to this point regarding that is we streamlined the application process for that relief and payment programs. And we lowered the burden of proof to a small degree. That, you know, if they've lost their job through coronavirus, we're not asking for a workforce commission receipt to substantiate it now. It's, and it's available online, so if someone wants to apply for that online, they can.
That's a big-
We haven't waived any fees to this point. It hasn't been requested, I don't think anybody's, we've had a couple people start interested in payment plans, but I don't think anybody is on it currently.
I think that because there's a service fee that's put on by the credit card people.
Oh, no, no, it's, so it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a credit card fee for a payment plan. Basically, was, if someone's behind on their bills because they lost their job, because they're working a service industry that closed.
I think she was just maybe waiving that fee as part of the-
If, in that case, we can look at it, but it's not a mandatory fee by any means.
No, I just think that anywhere now, there's a fee for credit card usage, no matter where you go, you know?
Only for utilities and municipalities.
Elisa, you broke up a little bit, what was that?
The consumer does not pay a credit card fee, except when they make payments to utility companies and municipalities.
If you use any type of the credit card services, the swiping, anything like that, there is a fee associated with that, like-
As a consumer, you may not see it.
Yes, to the merchant.
To the merchant, yes.
Oh, yes, agreed, all merchants see it. It is only utility companies and municipalities that have the legal ability to kick that fee back to the consumer for them to pay. If we're on the same page.
Yes, in general, that's true. And the credit card usage fee, if that became an issue, that'd be something that we could discuss with that customer, if that becomes a hardship for them. But we're not waiving the credit card usage fees under the coronavirus. I just don't think there's a strong rationale to do that across the board.
Sure, it was just a question I wanted to pose. And then, I'm not sure I heard Sonia's question. Have we had any people request assistance?
We've had, we've had at least one.
We've had one, and they came in, they took the paperwork, and it was like-
Yeah, we had one person, yeah, we had one person come in to request the paperwork. And I believe they might have been on, they filled it out, at least initial draft, they filled it out. But by the time the next billing cycle came, they didn't need it anymore. So no one's currently on it at this time.
Okay, well, that-
Which is a good thing, you know, that residents aren't in a position where they need that relief. But if there's somebody that you know of that's struggling and would benefit, you know, as the representative, you know, you pass along that information, they can call.
And I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that we have lowered the burden of proof, and we have made it accessible online. Because it's one thing to offer assistance and then make it exceedingly difficult to achieve. So I personally appreciate the fact that we've done that, and I think that's important enough to make.
Back to the budget, we don't need to be solving code right now.
All right, so you see the utility pool here. The next is the property tax revenue. And so there's the difference that you see of that eight and a half thousand, nine thousand dollars. So at this point, I think it's, I want to switch the discussion. I want to pull up slide six, or slide four, rather, from the read-ahead packet to discuss the tax rate proposal process. So they changed the terminology from year's past, day being the state. Instead of having a rollback rate and a, they had a bunch of different terminology. Now it's a little more straightforward. They have a no-new revenue rate, you know, voter approval. The two thousand nineteen rate that we enacted is higher than our voter approval rate, which means if we wanted to keep the same property tax rate, it would have to be voted on in the city, because we have to have a election about it. Given the timeframes and costs associated, I don't think that's a prudent approach. So the highest rate that could be charged is a voter, without going to exceed that voter approval threshold, is point four 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 eight, half a hundred dollars. The no-new revenue rate, which would be to maintain the same amount of revenue as last year, is point four two nine four. The, for the budget, we took a round number, point four four three, which includes a significant rate reduction from the two thousand nineteen rate, but still allows us to achieve some of those strategic priorities and other items, keep pace with inflation and costs by having a rate at four four three. The, for tonight's discussion, a future agenda item, we're not going to do this right now, but when we determine the rate that we want to go with, tonight, the city council will vote on the proposed rate, and that proposed rate will be used in the public notice announcement for, in advance of setting that rate. It isn't, we're not going to set the rate tonight, that vote's going to happen later, but for the public notice portion, that's what we'll be voting on later. And there's a form that's associated with it that's included in the read-ahead packet. And here we have the discussion regarding the holdovers or council members in the votes and word of that references.
So that brings us to discuss the path forward. What we, Jared and I came up with was that we ought to go in there, just because we don't have council members enough to do it normally, we should plan on time to have the holdover coming in, one of the holdovers, either Mary or Mike, come to the meeting and let it go have that meeting. And we think that the right answer is the point four four three zero. That allows a significant reduction, still about five percent in the rate from the prior year, but actually generates a little more money because the price values went up. We would make that part of the public hearing next week and say, that's the recommended of the proposed rate that we were going to have. But on the case, if we don't have that, holdover person show up. We are not allowed to go off and establish a rate other than the no-new revenue rate. We don't even vote on it, it just happens. And so on their spreadsheets, where you see the twenty twenty-one budget and the twenty twenty-one alternate budget, that's the difference on the property tax line. Budget that we're recommending is point four four three, based off of point four four three tax rate. The alternate is based on the point four two nine four. And you can see that this sheet is about nine thousand dollars difference between those two. Now, the importance of doing that this year is that this is like compound interest. You never get this opportunity back if you don't go do it. If we settle on the point four two nine four, that nine thousand dollars goes away. Next year, we have a full complement, we can go adjust for inflation and all of that kind of stuff, up three percent, et cetera. But we never get this nine thousand dollar back, so we don't do it this year. We won't do it next year, we won't do it the next year, we won't do it the following year. Ten years out, we'll be giving away ninety grand over ten years if we can't go try to go do this. So it is a kind of a big deal to try to make this happen. Whether or not we get folks here to go trigger that, I don't know.
There is, there is a way, it's complicated. And we'd have to get guys on, but there may be a way to recoup the difference between the voter approval rate and the proposed rate, going back a very limited number of years, like two or three years. So that when, in a future year, the voter approval rate accounts for that gap. It's complicated, it's new, I wouldn't rely on it. And I think the takeaway here is to- And I I think the takeaway here is to, to plan for the proposed rate. And if we don't, then as the mayor said, we're, over the long term, that's a significant problem.
So would we hearing that, you know, with the possible with the ninety thousand of kind of, one of them do not show up? Do we know, one of them are going to show up? Has anybody attempted to contact them? That would be to make a date where it's feasible for one of them to be here? Do we know if they are going to be here? Has anybody talked to them?
So we're going, we're, we're going to reach out to them. Um, I know we're, we're, we're including in the, in the agenda packet to, to recognize them and hoping that that recognition would, would be a way that they were, they're open to coming. Um, frankly, it is on my to do list to, to reach out to them. And let's, but as councilmen, fellow former council members, current council members, if you have a, a relationship with those individuals that, um, you could, so comfortable reaching out to them, I'm encouraging you to do so.
But I mean.
The adjusting of the dates is problematic. Our problem is, is that, that we do have a schedule that we have to keep by, so for all locations in the life. The eighth, uh, the reason, later on, when we get to future agenda items, we're going to talk about the move to, to step in the first day. So the eighth, we need to do that, go meet the publication schedule. And if we postpone any of these decisions until after that, then we start running into problems on the other. So it's really a case of, uh, we gotta, we gotta ask them to please come, do their, you know, feel that they're sick and tired to go off and, and, and come. They actually don't have to stay and vote, but they gotta make the rule.
They can call and zoom in.
They can zoom in.
So I think like, you know, with us either contacting, contacting them, but it being like, we could do it like, you know, I sit in councilroom. But I think like, if there was a letter sent or something to the residents asking them to come or to zoom in or to, for them to come to be, that that would be, you know, the way to go rather than hoping that they show up.
Uh, yes.
I, I didn't mind.
Uh, real quick, I, I think that instead of getting the tax rate, I, I, I think that the statute under the local government code envisions that four fifths quorum not only existing at the meetings called, but uh, for purposes of, you know, in other words, you, if you lose a quorum, you lose a forum. But I think, I think the idea may be that they need to be there and present for the vote as well.
And, and if I may, that actually segues into the question that I have. So for example, um, if in fact, say, we do have a holdover council member show up and to vote on what we are proposing, and say, a majority of the four or potential five, I'm assuming they both could show if they so chose. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I'm assuming that there has to still yet be a majority in order for that proposed rate to pass.
Has to be a sixty percent thing, so the three current city ones are going to have to vote on it. Have to vote, yeah, the other two don't.
Okay, and so, and so then, and then also just for clarification, and this is really more for the record than this for me. Um, Jared, if you can just quickly break down voter approval rate versus our proposed, and and where that comes from.
Okay, so the, the voter approval rate is the state limit that was passed as part of Senate Bill Number Two in twenty nineteen, where in, in years past, cities, municipalities were able to increase their property tax revenues up to eight percent. That has changed, has now three point five percent. So the three point five percent increase of our previous revenue rate is what is capped at. Anything above that would go to a vote for the city revenue. So we could, the city could still take a higher rate, they just have to pass a ballot measure to, to do so. Um, and we don't have the time to do it. The, the no, the no new revenue rate is the rate that would keep the revenue constant from FY nineteen to now.
Okay, I just, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm not sure that everyone understand, understood what voter approval rate means. Thank you.
So we're ready for almost tonight?
Um, I think we'll, we'll come back to it, but I wanted to, to explain what's, what's happening there as we go back to, to the revenue. Um, and go back to the spreadsheet.
So the holdover council member has come on September eighth?
The, the question was that a holdover council member needs to come on September eighth, and that's, that's correct. There's, the, we're expected to set that council meeting um tonight.
So basically, anybody out there that knows or has a personal relationship with either Mike McClabb or Mary Poole, please call them and encourage them to come on September the eighth, so that we can have a vote and save our taxpayers some money on their property taxes and at the same time, increase the city's revenue.
Yeah, so here's the, for everybody aware of this, here's the um calculations that that go, that are on the backend, uh, with the, this takes into account the uh, property tax freeze for those citizens that qualify and the calculation of what the city revenue amount. The diminishment rate is not something that would apply in our case, is the best way to describe that. Um, it's, it's there for cities with, with financing and other unique features. It really does not apply to us. So our proposed rate um comes out to, to three hundred forty five thousand, five hundred fifty five dollars for our budget. Um, one and two, based off of every year, there's a certain number of a collection shortfall. Um, and FY twenty, there, we're actually pretty close to the budget mark, but the revenue projection was actually three hundred thirty six thousand. There's about a one percent collection shortfall from year to year. So while the rates would imply that we collect three hundred forty five thousand, assuming a collection shortfall of one percent, the budget number would then be three hundred forty two thousand. Basically risk adjusting for those people who protest uh their taxes. The. I'll get this. Uh, credit card usage fee on the general revenue side, that's with the court. Um, municipal court revenue, so here's something that I want the council to be aware of. In years past, our municipal court revenue in eighteen and nineteen actuals was about a hundred thousand, averaged just about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, going into the FY twenty budget, we, risk adjusted to actual sum to be ninety five thousand. We're going to fall very short of that budget number uh this year. And looking ahead to next year, making some assumptions that municipal court revenues will, will lag um next year, that a lot of that, that is due to traffic enforcement operations in the immediate response to cor- the coronavirus outbreak locally. Uh, the projection should improve, but given the lower level of traffic and commerce and things on our roads, it's only logical to me that, that there would be some reduction in the number of traffic things that are issued, less cars and things being on the road. Less people moving about. Call it, you know, college being likely put on, potentially on the online classes and the master and other things. So that's the reason for the lower amount. Still higher, significantly higher than are projected for FY twenty. It's something that's, I want to put out there for councils to beware of and to stop if they had input.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that with our municipal court revenue that we're getting, like, does it balance out with the amount of money that's going out for the, the positions that are there?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't, I don't know. It's not my head. It's, it's.
Well, this is the.
The, the.
What, what do you want to include in that?
What?
You want to include, I mean, obviously the judge led it, get, get included, what?
Isn't there, is it, is it that two clerks?
No, it's one. So, so there's, there's two people there. Just, you just count their salaries, then yeah, even at that, you're covered. Uh, but if you don't have court, well, no sense to have police either, right, or vice versa. So how, how far, how deep do you go? And does that cover two police officers, full, uh, full time police officers and court clerk and the judge? And uh, part of, part, yeah, the same.
As the city, I think physically, yes, everything should be looking, looking into and taken into consideration. Especially, you know, when we're doing our budget. We don't know how long the coronavirus is going to last. I think eighty thousand is even like, you know, quick for me, if we're at fifty eight now and then our projected for twenty twenty one is eight.
Well, the, the difference there is that we have a two month shutdown of the state. And that's really what, what, what gets, gets to our, is that when we had, late March and all of April, when the, when the world shut down, traffic out there was nothing, of course, but that's one time we didn't have really protocols in place or whatever. The, the, we come up and start playing kick and folks. Uh, so we, we, we did like everybody else, pretty much, you know, only on emergency, do we go out and do effect that. Will we do that again? I think the answer to that is no. I don't think that's going to happen. Uh, will, will, is there still an impact in the traffic levels? The answer to that, that's what we get. They said that this weekend, eighty was, was kind of packed, uh, there, he was one right after another. And that was because Texas State was opening back up and seeing if you're coming. Uh, but up until this weekend, eighty has not looked like eighty did, you know, the normal times in the, in the, you know, in the recent past. So we've taken some judgment on that, whether you're right or not, I don't know.
I know. That's why I was just asking.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think this year is a low because of the two months that, that the world shut down, the states shut down. Uh, that probably is a floor. Whether eighty is, is too conservative or not, I don't know. It's always good, she pointed out earlier, revenue is always good, she blow. You know, if you plan for eighty and get eighty five, yippee. If you plan for eighty and get seventy five, oh damn. And uh.
What, what's really saved us um budget wise, looking at FY twenty, what's happened this year is our sales tax revenues have, have really buoyed us. They're, they're much higher than what we expected. And that's helped us uh overcome those, those shortcomings. Any other discussion on the municipal court revenue?
Oh, other.
Franchise fee, okay.
I was just going to say, other, other than the fact that if we had an additional officer and better coverage at the end of the year, it's a high probability that, based on what we're talking about, they could pay for themselves.
I mean, at least the, at least in that first year, uh, which, which is going to be different is that they're going to be a rookie. And so how, how, what, what kind of patrol work they do and how long they're on the road, how long it takes before they're on the road themselves, a lot of work for the chief to understand, but the, the logic applies that, yes, with more cops out doing traffic patrol, more court revenue that they're.
Yes, I, I mean, but then also you don't want to like manipulate that because there was such a little amount of history. You're not going to increase the, you know, be trying to get more the next year, you know, that's not. If it happens, it happens. If it, if it doesn't, it doesn't, but you know, I don't think that that would be a reason to say why if it was your debt, you know, this for everything to increase that revenue.
Yeah, so the, the.
Those numbers are, those numbers should be considered on the fact of the amount of traffic that goes by. Because that's the part that is, is, has changed and did change, as the mayor stated, for those couple of months where basically we had very little traffic because everybody was at home. But the amount of traffic is the same, whether it's being patrolled or not.
Right. Right. Um. The franchise fees, that's, that's for the utilities, the streets, um, permit, building permit. A lot of that funding is passed through, but some is retained by the city as revenue. The sales tax revenue, so here's, here's where we're going to run into one of those changes that we talked about previously, the restricted amount. So sales tax revenue, you'll, you'll see the eighteen, nineteen actuals, um, the twenty budget and the twenty projected. Um, we, receiving our, or projected to significantly here, sales tax revenue. You'll see it drop back down to fifty four thousand in our uh twenty one budget. The reason for that is on our special revenue fund, we're accounting for the, the amount of that twenty percent, twen- no, twenty five percent.
No, twenty.
Twenty percent of all city retained, or, or twenty percent of all sales tax revenues are restricted to street and road uh account. And so that eighteen thousand and fifty four, if you add them together, that's, that's where our sales tax total would be, that puts us by a, seventy two um thousand, so that's why, that's why, this is, this is conservative. We've seen a significant increase in ourselves. That's a lot.
It is not falling off. The sales tax revenue did not fall off like we thought it would. They stopped the, they get shut in. And I don't know exactly why that is. We thought it was timing for a while, now we think it may be deliveries, people still on it, they just have a couple of house that have been up, whatever. But whatever, for whatever reason, this year's going to be another very good year in sales tax revenue. And the fact that we've got no stores, aren't able to do, about to do something in, in the future, uh, all of that speaks that this is going to continue to rise. But we have, although the fifty four compared to the projected of seventy five, or compared to twenty twenty budget is around sixty, uh, looks like we're reducing it. And Jared said, this comes back to this accounting uh change that we talked about earlier of, of segregating restricted funds. So you got to really add the fifty four and the eighteen together, fifty to seventy two. So what we're saying here is we're going to raise the budget from sixty thousand in twenty twenty to seventy two thousand in twenty twenty one. Uh, that's a, that's a hefty increase, but it's, but it's being borrowed out by actually, so. Maybe, it'd be a good thing.
Yeah, Jenny?
Uh, on, uh, the restricted fund, so you're saying that the eighteen thousand goes to the roads and uh, uh, or goes to our, the revenue from our tax goes to that, to the roads, and we're restricting that fund?
That's correct.
Isn't part of the sales tax also used for our fine with the state?
Yes, but that's not calculated in here in our budget. It's, it's kept separate. We don't, that's taken off the top, and so we're not counting for it.
That's not included in the total sales tax revenue?
No, no, this is just the city portion. No, this is just the city portion.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to know. So, is it, there's not a restricted fund for that?
No, no.
Correct, okay.
So, I have a, a, a question, but really more of posing questions for you guys to figure out an answer. So, when it comes to, um, the sales tax revenue, we pay currently twenty percent, if I remember correctly, to the state comptroller's office to satisfy the agreement that we have that is for the excessive fine penalties that were assessed based on an audit ten, eleven years ago, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Twenty, I thought it was twelve thousand flat a year.
No, not flat, no.
I've never heard that. Yeah, it's twenty, twenty percent of our sales tax. And so, um, I'm assuming that information is being taken into account, and I'm just gonna make that assumption. But what I really want to propose and, um, let it be known for the record, as well as for us to dig into, FYI, this is a project I've worked on for eleven, twelve years. Kickers is that, um, unless you guys know something that I don't, I would love to be updated. But, um, to my knowledge, that agreement with the state comptroller's office expires in twenty twenty-one. I do not know what month, but I could go back and look, so I feel like.
You're mistaken on that. The, the.
Okay.
We got enough attention.
Our agreement with the comptroller does not expire until we pay off, we finish paying off the, the debt.
Period.
What, what, period. What expires is the law that allows us to utilize Bluebonnet, uh, our, the citizens' Bluebonnet rate and, uh, the, the revenues that the, the revenue that Bluebonnet taxes from our citizens and the revenue that the water company collects from our citizens. We can use that in the denominator, count that as city revenue to calculate the thirty percent limit of citation revenue.
To offset. So, I would be very curious, um, and it may be difficult, but nonetheless, I feel like it's pretty important. I'd be very curious to know where we stand in that, and if in fact we took that revenue off of our books from Bluebonnet and the water company, I'm assuming, um, uh, spectrum is included in that, uh, that we're able to.
Maybe, I don't think so, but I think it's public utility, not private.
All right, so if in fact we were to take that.
You can actually take that number yourself, Lisa. If you look at the sheet, the spreadsheet that he's all about, the bottom, uh, the twenty twenty-one city total revenue is eight eighty-three, five nineteen.
Yes.
As long as the thirty percent of that is eighty-eight thousand times three, whatever that is. You need twenty-four, something, so two hundred and fifty thousand or about, two hundred, call it two hundred thousand. As long as the municipal court revenue does not exceed two hundred thousand dollars, we're still under the thirty percent.
Well, I think it's important we, that we have, uh, a handle on knowing, not kinda, but literally where we stand, when that expires. I, I think, based on the fact that we do have a little more revenue, um, because of the Dollar General, um, and, and a few other things, but I, I don't feel like we have, I don't feel like we have the kind of revenue that could potentially help offset. So, I, I'd like to know that in the future, like soon future.
Well, I just told you how, yeah, the difference. The number from the state law of thirty percent is the limit. It's thirty percent of your revenue. Our planned revenue is eighty-three, thirty percent of eighty-three is two hundred and forty something, so two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, if we collected more than that in citations, we would be back in, in the suit. However, we're forecasting eighty thousand, less than, about a third of that, so it's, it's not like we're even close.
So, if we, if we, if we took the other public utilities off of our books, according to the state comptroller's office, we're nowhere close being in what you call the suit.
That's correct, because they're not in our books.
I don't, I know they're not literally in our books. I'm just saying that I know that we've had the ability to book that as revenue to help offset that thirty percent.
Yeah, I'll work the math out for you and give it to the city to give an email. How's that?
Perfect. That's, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, the last revenue item is, uh, the special revenue fund. We talked about street and roads, the hotel taxes. Uh, you see the actual budgeted and projected, uh, the budgeted amount reflects where, where we stand with our projected hotel tax revenue. Now, that would like, that might be even a little short, what we get. Uh, the court restricted, there's a lot more court restricted fund types now. Uh, a lot more than the four that we had previously, there's now nine, ten. So, we're counting for each of those here, very small dollar values. And then the last item is the law enforcement, uh, training, uh, fund. There is a community development fund that we maintain, it's never included in the budget because it's always zero unless there's a grant that comes in, uh, but considering that we're going for grants, included in all the budget here as a zero, if you go back in the past, you look at seventeen, sixteen, you'll see funds in there. Um, wanna put it on the budget table, just so everyone's aware of where those are being used. In the past, the grant revenue FEMA funds have been in an account line item associated with the general fund and it's kind of a in one door, out the other, and it's a place for transferring, uh, funds. Uh, and the future will likely use our community development fund, that's, that's, that's.
So, for, for the future there though, that, that community development fund needs to be below the total. So, you could have a grand total if you wanted.
Right, right, okay.
So, what we want, when we budget, we, we need to be budgeting on maintenance and operations, which is what you got there, right on. And yet, there is the money in there this year, uh, in the grant, uh, the budget is there. That's the city already has money to just spend.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that cleaned up on the, on the next, all right. Uh, going towards the expenses, let's small and large. So, here is the special revenue fund. And segregated these, here's the hotel tax usage types, taken from state law, and then the court and law enforcement, the street maintenance repair. Here, you'll see the five thousand dollars dedicated to signage, which we discussed in the previous, um, discussion. And then the remaining amount collected, the twelve thousand dollars of revenue, balanced out in two thousand dollars in advertising and five thousand dollars in art programs. That could be the performance arts, concert events, there's a slew of things that that could be. But for a budget standpoint, this is the proposal, this is a proposal from city council's input on how to send our hotel taxes that we collect. Any discussion on these items?
Yeah, so if you recall, we, we, from the page that we just got off of, if you look down there, there's twelve thousand dollars that was in the proposed revenue for hotel tax restricted. This is the expense side of that. So, if you look at this, there's five plus five plus two, that's the twelve thousand, so they balance. The specifics of how you spend that money are, we think we're gonna spend some on signage, and we think we're gonna spend some on maybe art programs. This is the, the concept that we talked about months ago, about using, uh, maybe the Fourth of July as a, uh, art, uh, music festival, uh, doing something with some of the restaurants in town to get bands to come in here, do that during the day, and then, you know, making the whole, a whole festival over the, the whole day. And the other one is potentially the downtown, uh, downtown lighting event that has gone on every December, potentially getting some bands to come, uh, do something of that. This would be like, you know, paying for the band.
Yeah.
To come do this. And so, that's, that's what those are, that it's not really fleshed out a hundred percent, but this is a, a place to put that money. And it's, and Jared pointed out, it's important earlier, way back at the beginning of all this, it's important to try to go balance that so that in a separate accounting scheme, so that we don't bring in twelve thousand dollars with the hotel money and convince ourselves that we've got twelve thousand dollars of goodies to go put on roads. We can't use that on roads. We gotta use it on the stuff that it's allowed to be used for. This is, this is why it's done.
Mayor.
Yes.
On, uh, historic conservation, uh, with the cemetery that's over there, would we be able to use some funds to like both restore some of the headstones that have fallen down? Would, would we be able to use the money to for signage there?
If it's, if it's from moats or related to tourism, if it's like a, a thing that people go to see, then yes. Um, otherwise, it's probably not. And that's, you know, who, if it, it's the sort of thing that, hey, come see Martindale Cemetery because of its historical significance or the people who are buried there, then I think that makes sense, but there's a memorial there.
And believe it or not, validity, there's validity to that, believe it or not.
So then, would, could we take like a thousand from the advertising and put a thousand in the historic conservations?
I'm seeing a reason why, why not.
Well, it can't be, it can't be your hotel.
Unless it qualifies.
And I, when, when we went through that, I, I don't remember seeing that.
If it's as part of like historical value, wouldn't you say that that cemetery has historical significance?
It, it's, it's, most of these things are for like historic downtowns and museums, um, yeah.
It's a private, private entity?
Yep. The two, the two items that, that, as, as we went through that long list of what, what the things could be used for, the two that stuck out, the CML agreed and we, we, we see a clear path that we can defend is signage that points to some kind of historic first endgame and artistic events that, that promote tourism, some of them.
Yeah.
So, those two items are the ones that, that, uh, really kind of match up.
You're right.
I think the historic condition is speaking of the dead, like, that would be.
Can you repeat what they said?
Uh, that the Lockhart event, um, speaking of the dead, that, that promotes tourism and, and is to be used with, with occupancy tax revenues. So, I, I think it would be the, the safer place to put it, as we discussed, we could, we had a council agenda on this that we discussed some, some months ago, was the art program at the time. That's, that's where this came from. Lisa, any, any feedback or comments?
No, I'm actually looking for a definition of historical cemeteries. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's worth actually looking into. I'm not proposing any, any changes at this point, but I think, I think Sonya made a valid point.
Okay. Jen?
Um, I'm all for, uh, I mean, I'd like to see a sign that says, welcome to Martindale, but, uh, apparently we can't do that unless we have some kind of, at least with the hotel tax, unless we have some kind of, it's pointing to some historical place.
Well, the fact that we have, but just for the fact that we have a district enables us to be able to do that.
Say that again?
For the fact that we have a designated historic district enables us to do that, as well as, um, to date anyway, the old, the Martindale School having received, um, historical.
Flag.
Qualifying factors, whatever it's specifically called.
Didn't they get a plaque?
I don't know if they've received it yet, but I do know that they are slated to do so.
Okay.
It's quite a, it's quite a lengthy process.
All right. So, moving on, that, that's basically the rest of it. The rest of this is court restricted, court restricted, small dollar stuff. So, uh, going on to, um, utility expenses, it's pretty straightforward. The large items you'll see here, um, the administrative overhead expense, that is a percentage of the wastewater service fee and solid waste service revenue, um, that goes back to the general fund, the, the fund or mailers are, are dealing in those things. Um, office supply. The payroll overhead expense, this is a, a bottoms-up calculation of the personnel that we have that manage our utility counts, utility crews. The sewer system repair and maintenance, uh, this is based on projections from this last year. Um, right now, we're, we're kind of using two accounts to, to pay for our treatment system and our sewer system repairs. And so, I wanna try to get those down, but that's. When you're looking in eighteen and nineteen and in our twenty budget, the reason why those numbers were so low is because they were being included in our wastewater treatment plant repair maintenance. So, in our budget, there's a, there's a distinction between the sewer system and the treatment plant. Um, we would counting costs for that accordingly in our actuals for this year, and so the budget is just, you'll see that reflected here. Total, it's, it is an increase over prior years, um, just given the amount of maintenance backlog that we've run into, try to, try to buy down this year. Hopefully, it's not gonna be as much next year, but there's, there's still a file list of things to go on and address that's reflected in the budget. The solid waste expenses, this is based on our contract fee, that's basically set. And that takes us to, that wraps up our utility fund expense. Any questions, comments on the utility fund side?
Go, go to the bottom. But, uh, those balance, you say.
Yeah, yeah, so at the bottom of these tabs, you'll see the, see the balance, the balance is to a hundred and forty-two.
Hundred and forty-two to the right.
There you go. All right. Look, oh, I'm sorry, go, I'll go back. Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, if, it's just, it's just my request as we're pushing three hours, um, and I don't wanna miss any particular line item. Can we have a three or four minute, um, break to use restroom and come right back? We don't, I mean, I'm not gonna log off or anything.
Nobody log off. Everybody just go, go do your thing.
Not gonna log off.
Nine twenty-four.
Very good. I'll be right back. Very good. I'll be right back.
All right. A little view.
Everybody back?
I'm here, Mayor.
You're not in your pajamas?
I'm here.
I heard Jane, I think. Lisa, are you here?
Lisa is here, yes. Here.
We are going to read it, Bean.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. So we left off with the, so it's fine. All right. Moving on to the general fund expense. This is where both of our budget lines, so. Do it in here. Um, salary wages expenses. You'll see that, uh, our budget item nearly reflects last year's budget, which is somewhat of a reduction, if you will, um, but an increase in cost. That's largely due to, um, reduced pension expenses. And, well, payroll, wages and salaries are set. That's, that's our rates. But our total payroll amount that we saw, uh, previous tab has been reduced in the pension expense area. And that's about it, I think.
The only thing that the council needs to know is-
Oh, yes. So the, the, the other item on the wages and salaries, this includes a, um, three percent cost of living increase across the board for all employees and a five thousand dollar, um, bonus pool. So this, this relates to our performance management framework. We're going to try to, we're going to set up a, in that performance management framework, measures and metrics to achieve those strategic priorities. And a lot of those cut across our entire staff. And so a lot of times when, when you're setting performance standards, you have a little bit of the carrot, a little bit of the stick. The stick is the measures, the carrot is the, the bonus. Um, the thought process here is that separate from myself, what, whose salary and wages and things are set by council, um, that this bonus pool will be used to, uh, on a one-time dispersment for, um, performance awards. So I think on a, on an average, if you're averages across the city staff, it's about five hundred per individual. That is by no means what's going to happen. Um, it's going to be directly related to performance and, and what, what we term, so.
Like, who gets to decide that? Who gets to decide who gets, um, and, you know, who's going to, who, who's going to resolve that?
Unless the salary, it expenses are set, their salaries are set by council, um, it would be myself.
Well, see, I mean, I'm just going to make this a suggestion, but I think this doesn't matter. I mean, if we're in a smaller office, I would like to see it as a longevity pay. And I would like to see it according to years, according to the look to the lower years based on that rate annually. Rather than it being called a bonus, I think longevity pay is, is better.
Like a, like a longevity bonus that's based on years of service?
Yes. And for everybody to get it. I just think, you know, that whenever it comes down to it, having a pit only, you know, with, with one person based on, we should have a team that's all willing to work together and, you know, they're doing the best that they can every single day. And I mean, and I'm sure like, you know, with saying that somebody is actually doing more and they're more deserving of this money than somebody else if they're all working together as a team, I don't think that, I'm not driving with that. But I think like if it's called longevity pay and it's done like, you know, with, it could be like five hundred dollars. If, you know, the lowest team, one fifty to the highest team, five hundred, it could be a wrap. Then that would be better than if there's being a performance bonus.
But I, I don't know that, that, I'm, uh, unless Jared speaks to it, but I don't know that, that, uh, I don't like the term longevity pay because that sounds like all I got to do is stick around and I'm going to get, get, get the next month.
That's for dedicated employees.
Uh, okay. But, but I like the idea of, of, of team-based bonuses. So the bonus pool could be that, we, we actually discussed the concept of, of, uh, bonuses to individuals can be counterproductive, as you're pointing out, okay? You know, Joe and, Joe and Sam work side by side, but somehow you spotted Joe doing stuff, he gets money Sam doesn't. Now, now you're mad at each other and mad at the company or the, the city or whatever. We don't want to do that. And when I try to propose to do that. But I'd also don't like the idea that, that says, oh, you're going to get longevity pay, which means that you can just stick it out to the bare minimum and you're going to get some extra money. Don't like that either. I think the, the, the idea here was, as, as Jared pointed out, was to structure some metrics that indicates cities' performance in different areas. And the people that perform to help make those metrics right, they get, uh, uh, recognition for that. And it's not, you got it, you didn't. But for, for instance, if the utility guys could somehow figure out how to, how to reduce the number of late notices or collections or what Miss Carmen was doing the last few months, finding all the people that didn't work paying, you know, those are, those are things that, that increase the city. But they don't do it in the back. If one of them does do it, the other one does, you know, they, they have to work together to go make that happen. So both of those people would be eligible for a bonus for achieving those metrics. Now, should we give Harry some, some money for, because, because they achieved improved utility? Nah, I don't think so. I think Harry needs to go out and work on his metrics and figure out how to go do that. And if, if something good happens in the police department, well, then maybe the police department gets a chunk of that change too. But it, it, it doesn't mean it's just to an individual. It means it's to the team that are, for people that impact the metric. But I think we're, we're, that terminology issue here versus, versus what your intent was. Or you, you jumped to the fact that, oh, this is all going to be individual bonuses.
Instead of that, the way that it was stated is a performance bonus.
Right. So this, yeah, so the performance bonus pool, and you're, and you're right. It, it, we pay two individuals, I think the comment is the, is the team. I think that's a, that's a wise input and that's something we've talked about previously. Um, this is, we're putting together a performance management framework. It's good to reward people who achieve those, those metrics.
But, you know, and, and I would like this to say, to ask further, I would intent, still get it. Like as an, as an employee, do you think, have there ever been performance bonuses? No? Hmm, there's been merit. A merit bonus, a merit bonus. But it only did, um, that's why.
Continue. Jan's got her hand up. Jan, we're going to call on you first. Shoot.
Uh, yes, uh, the, so the bonus pool is new?
Correct.
Uh, now shouldn't this be like a separate agenda item that we should talk about?
It's a, it, it could be if it, if it needs to be in terms of the policy. But this is to set the budget, to get included in the budget. And then if it, if it needs to be an agenda item on how that's administered, uh, we could consider it then. But to get it in the budget, that's what I'm doing now.
All right. I understand this is now, I mean, bonus pool thing is, is a budget item. But the longevity pay, I think some, if we're going to do something different like that, that should be a separate agenda item.
What I, what I'm hearing you say is that you are requesting that, that it be left where it is, but in the near future, we have a specific agenda item to define it more specifically. Is that what you're saying?
We would have to, with a bonus pool, we're going to have to anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, uh, Mayor Devaney came up with a lot of good ideas about using it, and I think it's great incentive. But longevity pay wasn't on there and, and, you know, just adding on other things, I don't know if that's a good idea.
It's another term. It's just a different term.
Yeah, change the name.
I like bonus.
I, I still have something I want to say when y'all are ready.
All right, I'm done. That's all I wanted to make.
All right, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, so first of all, I wish I had a big fan in front of me blowing my hair so I could express what a breath of fresh air, um, these words are. Um, what, what I really want to say is that call it what you like. But any type of bonus inspires productivity and creativity to increase efficiency. Um, I, I would venture to say that this is also, would be, that this ties what we have discussed for years. This ties or puts some, an anchor to an actual annual evaluation, which puts it in the budget, so therefore somebody's going to do it and it's got to stay on the record as to employees having, being evaluated, um, which we've talked about before, for the fact that it would be based on a metric, um, that, or a rubric where, you know, here's the criteria. Obviously, the employee knows what the criteria would be and the criteria would be different for different positions. The criteria for, um, a city clerk is going to be different than the city accountant and so forth. Um, I, I completely agree. Change, change the name. Quite frankly, I don't care what you call it. Um, be it, I, I, I've never known that anyone in, at least in my, in my timeframe, that anybody in the city has received a merit bonus. Um, I'd be curious to know what, um, what the basis was for that. I'm sure it could be found somewhere, but I think that information might, um, be at a springboard or at least give us a reference to make definitions and potentially help determine what that, um, rubric or metric may look like. And then the last thing is that not only is this a breath of fresh air, but this is not, not just inspires the productivity, but it, it puts forth that notion, it ta, it takes that bureaucratic sit on your laurels and collect a check, um, stereotype that so often, I'm not saying anyone in our city, quite frankly, I think everybody in our city works incredibly hard and doesn't get paid for half of what they actually do. So don't misunderstand me, please. All right. I, I think it's a positive thing. There, I'm done.
Okay. This, 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 this might, this might help. So on, if you refer back to our strategic plan chart, how everything falls together.
Oh, wait. I gotta say, I gotta, I have to say one more thing. The longevity, the longevity pay notion, when you get your three percent increase, that's what you get for just being there. Now I'm done.
All right. So the, so, so how this all relates, if you look on this slide, this is slide two of the read ahead, uh, PowerPoint packet. The, the strategic plan, far as the future spend plan and now the annual budget, what we haven't gotten to yet really is a strategic performance management framework. But we've, you've seen a very rough draft. We haven't had a chance to discuss it yet. Probably something that we'll get to in, in October, frankly, maybe, maybe late September. But it translates the strategic outcomes into specific performance metrics and measures. And then part of that framework is aligning personnel performance goals to those strategic outcomes in the annual budget and the annual budget. So if a strategic outcome is not funded in the annual budget, obviously you don't want to set an annual performance goal against it if it's not funded. Most cases it will be. What, what this does is helps make our community strategic plan impact the day-to-day operations of the city staff. And, and, and to motivate achieving those strategic goals is, is the, is the intent behind this funding request. I'll put it that way. Um, and I think the team's idea is a, is a great approach to do that. Um, you're going to have natural demarcations between different functions within the, within the city staff to, to do it. But the goal is translating that strategic plan into annual performance goals for the individuals and then rewarding them for the good work. That's, that's what this is, is trying to achieve. I, I think I, in my brevity, I, I, I left that out and I think it created some confusion. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Back to discussion.
So, so what I've heard is, is most people think having this in there, but it needs more fleshwork on it. And we, we've got an agenda item, a future agenda item already. And we've we've got an agenda item, a future agenda item already, um, identified for the strategic performance and, excuse me, strategic metric review, and we can throw that, this this help flesh out the bonus thing in there. The question before the council is, is what, you know?
Do we wanna fund it?
Do we wanna fund it or not? And so Sonia, yes, no, you know, as long as we call it the right word.
Uh, yes, but and also, like, the three percent, how it does raise, it should be it should be cost of living, right?
Yes, yes, it's the cost of living.
Uh-huh.
Um, so that way, it's it's universal.
Yes, so it's just, yeah, the the three percent would be a cost of living, it's not a longevity, it's not, it's a cost of living increase.
Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll make that clear. It's 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 stated as such, it's happened.
Okay, and so Jan, you, I think you said you kinda liked the idea, we just need to talk about it more, yes, no?
Yes, it's and it needs to be something that's.
I'm sorry, I stepped on.
Yes, it just needs a little more fine tuning.
Okay, great. And Lisa, you're nodding yes, yes, so everybody's happy with the five grand.
Yes, I'm in.
We'll go see how it works. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, there's, yeah, if something else comes up, then obviously, that's a discretionary item. Um, going going on through, I don't think we need to focus on any of the rest of the payroll stuff, because it all flows down to wages and salaries, except for the the pension expense, which which I mentioned briefly, that the the savings there is one less full-time equivalent, the full-time employee, and also, um, the the reduction in the the savings rate that that we need to achieve to to pay off the the liability, pension liability we have. We've done such a good job, we can start saving some of the money. It's a story on that one. Um, we don't have to save quite as quite as frugally as we have in the past. Election expenses, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, we have budgeted. That's, again, we're gonna have two elections, one in November, one in May. Um, that's what those funds are for. Um, we normally would have one every year. This next year, we'll we'll have two because of the delay of the current. So that's why in our projected 2020, you see only a three thousand dollar expense, and we had a a larger budget just because that election that that moved. Um, office supply, that, this is a small difference for for some of the other stuff. Uh, parks. Yeah, so parks here, we we've talked about the parks in in the future spend plan, here's what it looks like in terms of the actual last year's budget projected and next year's. And so it's, you'll see that, it's a substantial increase from where we were, um, three years ago. So hopefully, that 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 will be reflected in the public enjoyment of our parks. Yeah, okay. Um, streetlights, that's that's no change. And, all right, here's where we get into the, if we have a nine thousand dollar hit
I was wondering.
to our bu- to our budget, where it would come out. One of the areas we would see, would try to achieve some savings to to account for those reduction revenues, is the attorney fees. When we're looking at the twenty eight thousand dollar budget and what has been cost of the last couple of years, we we're making an assumption that we're gonna maintain a high level of need in this area to pursue substandard structures, um, code violation enforcement, and some of those things, kinda like what we did with the, um, building that's now under repair. The the cost, last year, the years prior, were were ongoing litigation, negotiations, well, I guess I'm gonna do litigation, but negotiations with the smart terminal, the E P J, um, and those things. So if we if we run into a budget crunch because of the revenue, some of that, about half of that, we're looking to save in the attorney fees space with just reduced activities and needs in that area. Uh, I P was, well, before we get to the audit fee, are there any questions on the the attorney fees, um, line item, and how that's related to the budget and alternative budget?
Other than I would like, I'd like for Kent to, uh, join us for a minute, if he's still around.
Yep, I'm here.
And and I'd like to hear what that really looks like, as in, um, what?
I think that's wholly reasonable, and, uh, you know, a couple of couple of important issues identified there. Uh, and, you know, this, the the ability to to alleviate some of that, I think, is a testament to Jared stepping in and doing a lot of very good work. So I I I don't have any problem with that that assessment. It still leaves room, uh, to work above the base budget, uh, but I think within a reasonable reasonable realm, so I I have no complaints.
I just don't, I just don't wanna set a number that is going to leave us in a place that we, as a council or a city, feel strapped, like we cannot, we can't take care of some, you know, legal business per se, because we don't wanna blow the budget. No, no.
And there was, so there was no other place that you could, you know, maybe take out of?
We're not really taking that much out. If you if you look at the projections for this year, and and I'm pretty sure we're we're square on the the invoicing, but we've had a busy year, and we're about where that alternative budget number would be. Um, in years previous, in eighteen and nineteen, we were doing, uh, code enforcement actions and litigation, and there were other items happening, um, that required that budget about. If if we were in an alternative budget space, those activities might not receive the same level of priority, um, as they might have otherwise. And that's, I don't think we'll be in a position where we're gonna lose out on services, we just not not get some of those nice-to-haves completed.
Well, you know, and and the other thing in looking at this is, I I think we're at least looking six months out before we get back to regular court. Um, so, you know, one of the things that you can you can look at is there's gonna be uh, the amount of time spent in the city doing that work. Maybe we'll see some more of it pick up, uh, in in twenty twenty-one, and there's there's a bit of makeup on that. Um, we've got that, and then, you know, really, there there's there's almost no option for any additional litigation at this point, because courts are so narrowed. So again, I think that that number's reasonably tailored.
Third thing that I just thought about was some of the legal work that I know that was done on, I believe it is four sixteen Main Street, the building across the street. Um, I would venture to say that may not be next year, but but I would I would venture to say the following year in twenty-two, uh, there could be some sales tax revenue that would help fund that. So again, that's a big picture notion of it cost us today, but will pay off in the next few years.
Well, just to be clear, the the budget number is is the twenty eight thousand, which reflects what last year's budget number is. The the alternative budget is only in that case where we do not have a quorum and are able to set the the proposed tax, uh, property tax rate.
Gotcha. Thank you, thank you for that additional explanation.
And Dwayne's question about the audit. Uh, the twenty, the budget of twenty thousand was not the number they gave us. They gave us eighteen thousand seventy, but they had the caddy out in there, engagement that it says, uh, travel and other mine expenses.
I think last year, they actually changed it under the.
They did, they did. They changed it to seventeen eighty.
Seventeen eighty-five, yeah. So that that it could be a little bit on the high side, um, but it's risk adjusted. All right, um, you'll notice that we have an engineering line projected for this year hasn't hasn't been that that much, but we expect, some of this was waste treatment plant, uh, one of those, were these, uh, building and plant reviews?
It could be plant reviews, this is this is deep range of money, but it's also, the reason we need to leave that in there is that as we get to the parks grant activity, or we're gonna need to go go have some real bankers go go work on this, and that's that's the money to go do that. I was hoping to spend some of that if you, you know, if you run out of time, I won't eat or whatever, with that. Yeah, yeah, that that could go in there, if the if if the engineering company do. There are professional fees, so either go there or down, professional fees, whether it will be parks.
Oh, it wouldn't be parks.
Or that's.
That's a more. Um, the other item worth noting here is the I T upgrade maintenance. Um, the base lo- the base budget of seventeen five hundred is is roughly aligned with where we've been in the last two years. Um, if we run into a revenue, a reduced revenue in the alternative budget because we're unable to pass a a property tax rate, here's, this is the other area we're looking to achieve savings. And, um, what's what's included in that savings is is no equipment purchases. So in twenty, there were equipment purchases. In nineteen, I believe there were also equipment purchases. If we look back to eighteen, um, there were not. So I think fourteen is is an achievable number. We'll be, we'll tighten our belts some, but I think it's still achievable, if if we're pushing that in that space. Other than that, there's really.
Yeah, there's two, two of the property maintenance repair.
Um, this is where you see some of that budget transfer between our mowing of our green space and our parks budget, um, the street maintenance repair. Um, this is, you'll see the reduction, so we had a forty thousand dollars in our budget, forty thousand projected. This number is our, is lower because the funding is split out between the two funds. So there's still, so to 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 get the total, how much is the city gonna spend on street and roads, you're looking at, you're gonna be looking at the general fund, street maintenance repair, and also the special revenue fund, which has the eighteen thousand dollars set aside from the sales tax revenue. Um, this is to make sure, again, that our restricted accounts and our general fund accounts are separated within our budget. This is one of those unique areas where, in addition to our restricted funds, we use additional general funds to increase our amount of spending, uh, beyond that that restricted use. So the twenty-two thousand, I would think of as, in addition to a restricted amount, how much we tend to spend, that's forty thousand dollars. Does that make, did I explain that clearly enough? Okay.
It's a split up between the two.
It's split up between the two. Just through the library, uh, expense item from the contract. The, here we go, the vehicle lease. So this is not something that we have funded previously. Right now, our our police officers are running on a fairly new but heavily used Ford Explorer. And, well, they two, they have two other police vehicles, um, neither of them are in a very serviceable condition. One of them is is not in a serviceable condition currently. And the other is is not patrol worthy. Um, and our hope is that we get a grant to help purchase a new vehicle. And we set aside twelve thousand dollars in our capital improvement fund to achieve that. We submitted the grant recently. But in case we don't receive that grant, what we would like to do is take that twelve thousand dollars in savings, use that as a down payment, and then budget for eight thousand dollars a year over the course of five years to purchase a new police vehicle for our police department. That way, we have two operating vehicles, and we're not basically running on, you know, one point two, one and a half vehicles. We have two fully functional patrol, uh, vehicles, which I think will will service them all.
If the council will remember, of course, we, two years ago, we went in for another, a grant to, uh, get a police vehicle from Blue Vodid slash L P R A. Didn't really make it past the first round, because we'd gotten one two years earlier than that. Uh, last year, we went again and made it to the final round before we got cut. Uh, we have submitted again for the third year in a row, and hopefully, we'll make it all the way to the end, and we'll get a new vehicle with through through that grant. Um, that's Plan A. We'll know that late fall, October, November, we'll we'll know whether that happens or not. But this, what he's, what Jared just described, is Plan B, okay? So if the if the grant doesn't come through, we don't wanna wait anymore, we wanna go get one. And we think we've got a lease to own or whatever option that that, uh, everybody seems to be using that allows us, with the twelve grand that we got in the long-term capital improvement activity and eight thousand dollars with the new money, um, that we can go go get into that and then get another vehicle here. So so there's a two-pronged approach. First thing we'd like to do, get the grant, that's cheapest, best solution for the city. Second thing is to go this other route and try to go get another vehicle in. And the next line item up there, vehicle prepared maintenance, we're also gonna be using some money to go take that not fully worthy vehicle and and begin to go get it back into, uh, better shape than it is now. And the third vehicle that's back there, we're gonna propose to sell it as soon as we get another vehicle on site to take away.
I I would just like to weigh in on the fact that unless I'm told otherwise, like there's some type of financial tax credit, not that we have any, but some type of bi- some type of benefit, I definitely would like to see us sell any of those used vehicles versus giving them away.
There you go.
Yeah. Any other comments or discussion?
We need new vehicles.
Yes, we do.
All right, so, um, at the bottom of of this of this chart, you'll see the the general fund balance. We currently have a positive balance of, uh, three point eight thousand dollars, three thousand four hundred thousand dollars. So that's good news. Um, that's that's opportunity for us to, uh, look at some of the priority items that are in the plan, future year spend plan. Um, we'll, as we discussed previously, we'll be updating that future year spend plan. And in our next meeting, I I think we can have a comparison of where we're at. Right now, as an example, the emergency fund savings level is still at our at our current pace of fifteen thousand dollars a year. Um, that we had talked about, looking how, where we, how much savings we need to account for over the course of a five-year spend plan to achieve our goal of two hundred fifty thousand. Um, that that number may go down, and then we can address that in our, uh, capital improvement fund. So there'll be some tweaks. I won't make any tweaks to the to the budget, but I'll highlight those areas where changes were made in our future year spend plan for consideration and cost of changes to to the budget in the future.
Maybe it's just me, but I think if we're gonna go to the public, that that general fund balance down there needs to be zero. So we need to go spread that thirty-eight twenty-four or thirty-seven two-one as well as the hundred and forty.
Say that again.
Back into. I think if we're gonna go pu- publish a budget to the to the public, which is next Tuesday, at a public hearing. I think if we're gonna go pu- publish a budget to the, to the public, which is next Tuesday, a public hearing, the, the general fund balance number ought to be zero, not three thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars. Or in the alternate budget number of three thousand seven fifty-one needs to be zero. That means we need to go put that money back into the budget somewhere.
I agree.
Two items, the two items that, that are not including the budget that's in our future year spend plan is a transfer to the capital improvement fund and the, um, economic development planning, city sponsored commerce initiative, whatever you want that to be. Those are, those are the two items that aren't, are not in there current.
Well, divvy it up. Divvy it up and put them in there.
It was the capital fund and what was the other one?
Cap, the, the capital improvement fund and the economic development initiatives. Put that one.
You mean the bonuses for the employees?
No.
No, no, this is for, um, it would be on that other page. There we go. So.
Economic development.
Priority one, this, this wrong, transfer that's twenty thousand dollars here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's the five thousand dollars here.
Yes, yes, okay.
That are not currently in our budget, that we're on the future year spend. What? Public, no, public comment?
Sure, I'll ask what.
I know there is a, I want to start. And I agree with, I mean, I, because I would know when I was having to start a mission. We were always mentioning our own pocket for historic gathering, um, or, you know, I know these guys are getting plaques and they're, they're building and stuff and anything that we wanted to enable. We were told we could come over here and make copies, but then we, um, knew from Julie and your work and we moved. So I just did it on my own here. There was never a, there was a line I think for a while. Uh, who there is that one where it's a start.
And that's because the charter of the historic commission is, is what's in the ordinance as opposed to some of the stuff that people were trying to go off and go do.
And Mayor, for those who are remote, can you recap what the person in the audience said, please?
Yeah, the suggestion was to include a line item for historical preservation, um, efforts for the historic committee, um, to, to look at.
But they aren't.
We don't, we don't already have one?
We don't have a, we don't have a budget line item for them to, to fund any of their activities.
And you'll have, uh, the river committee on there here. I could watch them a little bit in that quarter.
There's nothing, I've seen in our previous budget that had a river. It might go out in parks, associated with parks, but I don't think we've had any funding set aside for these commissions.
What, what, what type, I'm just curious, what type of funds would or could be needed for either the historic commission, other than printing, which obviously would already go, roll into our general, um, printing line item? Are they?
Um, like equipment, like a scanner. So it, it was mentioned from, so I really, my, my take on that is if, if there's, if there's a needed support, um, the city is available to, to do that. So.
Well, and.
There's print, heat or, or other things.
And the library has that equipment.
Yeah, the library's got it, which are free to use. Have a scanner here that's good, could connect to that. We've used it other times already. And, uh, both printers here are scanned, both of them. I mean, the scanning.
When we were gathering historical documents, so when you go to somebody's home, you need to be able to scan it.
It's portable. You can take that laptop and the scanner. It works that way.
I will gladly introduce anybody that needs to know amazing apps on your phone that scan to the highest level of quality. So you have one in your pocket.
So, anyway, uh, the.
Well.
To catch, like, there is not a line item on here for historic commission support you need to the historic commission. However, I do think there is money in here that takes care of, of the kind of needs that we know of. Now, there's not any money in there to go straighten up headstones somewhere. There's not any money to go put up fences around historic places, et cetera. So if that comes up and, and it's something that the city needs to consider, then I suggest that they come in and say, hey, this is what we want to go do. Can we get this on place at some time in the future? For, for this go around, I don't think this is, that, that's a public thing to go, go cross.
So.
What is that jam?
And same for the river committee. They're kind of advisories right now, but if they need money, all they have, they can come and ask and we can figure out what to do.
Absolutely.
Uh, so now, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
So just like what you said, the river committee or something like whenever they did sign up here, they passed out stuff out of booze whenever they were doing some kind of event or whatever. Um, they use funds then, but you said they can take it out of the parks, right?
I mean, if. Not, not out of the parks, out of the, out of, if they need to come in here and make copies, we can do that. If they need to go get something printed, they can come in there and say, hey, I got a hundred and fifty sheets or something to print to go do this that helps the city to go do it. There's money for printing.
What about the signs that you did for the river?
That came out of, uh, uh, that came out of city funds. Uh, don't remember exactly where.
What about what sign?
The signs. Canbat by.
Let's see where it's.
That didn't, that wasn't the river.
Maybe. But we paid the city.
Oh, I know that song, yeah.
The big ones.
Yeah.
You have to give it time to, must to work. Maybe close your eyes for a little while.
Okay. I was on it.
Okay, um, all right, let's, let's focus. So you, so what are you proposing? Uh, taking some of the money out of the emergency funds to the capital fund?
No. So we haven't, I haven't had a chance to do the math yet. The proposal is we include, that we take the remaining balance and put it somewhere. I guess my, my proposal would be to put it in a capital improvement, uh, fund transfer line item, um, whatever the remaining balance is. So that's three thousand, uh, three thousand eight hundred.
I say, I say stick it there. We can always amend it.
I'm game. Everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
All right.
I, I think it's something we need to start. Now, are, now, were we gonna put some of the funds for road maintenance, uh, no, uh, road repair in the capital fund?
That's already funded, I think.
Yeah, so the road repair, that was the twenty-two thousand dollars out of the general fund.
Well, we already have sixty thousand in that, uh, road repair fund or more.
That's our capital improvement fund. That's, that's basically a savings account for pay-as-we-go, uh, capital.
So that is now our capital, uh, improvement fund?
No, this is, this is a transfer to go into that savings account.
Oh, okay. But it's. On our budget.
Yeah, right, yeah, just like, just like the emergency fund.
Okay.
Instead of making it to the end of the year and saying, hey, look, we, we, we've got this money left over. Let's stick it over there. We're saying upfront, we're gonna put at least thirty-eight hundred dollars in there and, uh.
So if the, any of the other advisory committees needed some kind of funds for something that, that made sense, then we could get it from the capital.
No, no, just get it out of the regular. They're, they operate, yeah, coming out of these operational accounts, the, the sixty, the office supply, advertising, utility, software, somewhere in there.
Okay, all right.
All right, so that brings us to, that's it on the, on the budget. We're now, we're now balanced. The only things that are, how is that so we're not balanced?
You can, you know what to do now.
Okay, that concludes the agenda item five B. So now we're gonna move on to A. And why this is in discussion and possible action is we need to, we need to, to decide now that you've heard the tale of, of tax rates.
You don't go to that six A.
Okay, six A, there you go.
So what I need, what we need is, is you've heard, heard the rationale. We'd like to go in with Plan A, which is the voter, excuse me, the proposed rate of point four four three. All right, knowing that if for the quorum reasons, we, we can't take a vote on, on the proposed rate on the night, that we will be stuck with point four two nine four. But we're gonna have a public hearing next week on the twenty-fifth, and we have to, have to publish the rate. And according to the CAD people, uh, as long as we're, put the big one in there, we're okay to go to the little one. But if we put the little one in there, we can't, can't go up to the big one. So what I'm looking for is a motion that says that we, we are, proposed rate should be at point four four three.
Hey, there, there you go.
We'll take it from there.
I'm, I make a motion, I make a motion that we set the proposed tax rate at zero point four four three zero.
I second.
And the only other one here is?
Yes, and I just wanna make clarification that since I am on the tab on the P C A, Carl County Grayland District, that I can vote, that I can vote.
Yes, is that a question? Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, they, they are our employees over there. That's why, yeah. Okay, so. So the proposed rate, uh, that we will use is point four four three to pass three O. Thank you, we got that.
Okay, now, when is the, what were those dates again, uh, Mayor?
We'll get to it again.
Okay, okay, never mind.
Oh, well, well, that's, that's when we're gonna set the rate. There's a meeting.
Next week on the twenty-fifth, which is, is, is the public hearing.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
That's gonna be a huge deal.
Yes.
It's next Tuesday, right? Next Tuesday.
Yes.
Yes. And that's when we're gonna vote on it? I mean, I mean, it, when does it have to be published?
Public comment.
It's, it's an opportunity for anybody who's interested in the public to come in here and tell us, hey, you guys, what the heck are y'all doing? Or, oh, good, I'm glad you're doing more for the parks. Or, yay, 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 the work roads are getting better, or whatever they want to say.
It, it's a public hearing, so no action is taken that night.
Right, I know. Uh, but, and when, when does it have to be published in the paper?
It'll have to be published in the paper seven days before we vote on it, which is the eighth.
So we're, we're putting the, the notice together for next week, and it'll go in, in next week's paper.
Okay, gotcha.
That problem?
I don't think, I think it's gonna go like this long. I would like for it to be earlier, but.
Uh, we can call, uh, the public hearing is, uh.
Would you, any of the, any of the business?
No, we put that in the resolution. I put, we put that in the resolution that, that can actually.
You, you can, you can also set some parameters.
I don't know. Uh, I think we better stick with what we got. Six thirty next week.
I, I believe you can set some parameters, as in the meeting will be from six thirty to eight o'clock. And when the meeting's over.
Yeah. Yes, we can do that. Okay.
But it's just a, there's not gonna be no action.
No action, no, nothing, just to hear it.
Okay, that brings us to agenda item six B, which is the awarding of five-year wastewater system, and that's up to here.
All right, so, um, our wastewater system operation contract expires on October first. Um, provided an update on it in a previous administrative report. Looking at the calendar, there's really not an opportu, there was not really an opportunity to provide an extension to, to that, that request or proposal. And so at this point, I'm proposing for city council to consider and, and approve the city to proceed with awarding a contract to the single operator with wastewater, wastewater services. They are our current incumbents, um, and at a contract price, not, not to exceed the, uh, the proposed prices that we provided in the earlier update.
I, I would like to make the motion to go ahead and accept, uh, water, wastewater services, heat, air, gases as recommended.
I'll second it.
Uh, is this, now, you said, the contract period is one year, one base year?
It's, it's one base year and four one-year options. So the total effective period of the contract is five years.
But it's still, we're still review every, from year to year?
Yes, it's, it's, it's our, it's our option of whether we want to execute the next option or not. So it, it, we always have the opportunity at that point to, to walk away.
And it means that the council is not required to go out for, um, a request for a proposal or qualifications for another five years. Is that correct?
Correct. Unless, unless we decide not to.
Right.
If there's a decision made enough to execute that option, then we will have to go through another proposal process.
So.
We've got a motion and a second on the table.
Well, I know, I know.
Karen?
So.
What's that?
Uh, so I was looking at their, um, contract, I guess, and it's twelve hundred dollars a month.
It, 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 the, right, that contract is inconsistent. Um, the, the ten, the, the proposal had, um, it had some questions regarding it, and because numbers weren't adding up. And so the clarifying statement, because I did not, did it not produce the attachment A, volume two price proposal template in accordance with the directions where we asked for annual costs? They provided what appeared to be a monthly cost. And so one, one of the attachments was the correction to the price proposal portion of their, of their work. And that's, that's what you.
Which is, which was sixteen hundred and five, and fifty dollars an hour, you know?
No, it was.
For X.
Per annual.
Eighteen thousand.
For the first year, and, and then it increases incrementally from there throughout the auctioneers.
Uh, I, I, I don't remember seeing that. I don't have it in front of me. Well, I do.
It's attachment.
Yeah, I can. Now. Now, I mean.
Maybe not. I do, it's just.
From what I see, and.
Is how? Given that. Is a, is a price, is a price proposal considered confidential information typically? It, it's that, we haven't been to a contract yet. It's, it's not, it's not subject to public information yet.
Oh.
We haven't been to a contract, so I, I, I'm concerned about displaying that pub, the information publicly when it's competitive confidential information.
Because this was more about qualifications.
This was a proposal, and I, I, I don't want to.
Okay, okay. Well, I, 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 I'm still have questions about that, and that should be in probably an executive session. Am I correct, Kent?
Yeah, so what you don't wanna do is, is the purpose of thi- this process is to make sure that one competitor doesn't secure another competitor's information. And use it for their benefit, and so that's the purpose of, but yeah, if, 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 if we need to go into executive session, we always have that option.
Okay.
I don't think it exists tonight.
I, I, I don't, I don't think we need to, I can, I can, if, if you go to the email that was sent out with the attachment, it's a second, it's a PDF attachment that City of Martindale.
I read it, I read it.
It, it's a single box. And then there's, there's one that's in all caps that says annual fixed price.
Oh, well, I don't think I saw that one.
Yeah, the annual fixed price is the, is the one that controls, I guess, in the.
I'm looking at the, the proposal.
Yeah, the proposal had inconsistencies, and so we requested for clarification. They provide clarification. The clarification came in on, yeah.
All right, uh, um. Uh, we got two votes for it. I'll, I'll just say no.
All right, we got TTA and Jan is a no. Motion passed. All right, with that, we're on to item six B, which is discussion of our selecting an engineering firm.
All right, so for this one, um, we, we, we are selecting an engineering firm to select, to support our grants, our hazard mitigation grant and other capital improvement projects, other potential grants, including park grants and the rest. Similar, similar contract period, one base year, four one-year options. Um, the specific scope of work is, is laid out in, in general sense. Each task is gonna have its own task order, so it's gonna be a task order-based contract. So as the need arises, we'll issue a task order and they'll go and do the work on demand. So for the, the initial task order is gonna be to support this hazard mitigation grant. Um, the, the full scope includes engine, professional engineering support for public work projects, free stormwater drainage, wastewater system, other infrastructure, space improvements, and then basically anything else that we need a professional engineer to do. We received twelve complaint proposals. Um, the evaluation members were merit of any council members, Bill Lewis, Bunker, and myself. And, and the award criteria for this is best qualified, which means before we look at price or anything else, we need to determine who the best qualified, uh, firm is based on their statement of qualification. And the criteria we, we used to do this was prior experience, past performance, capacity to perform, and then affirmative action such as the hub certification, small minority or women-owned businesses. The evaluators individually scored each proposal submission according to a rating sheet that was published along with the RFP that had a number of, um, factors that were considered in each of those criteria. The results of that scoring show that there were three firms that were clearly among the top best qualified, um, no matter how you looked at, at the scoring data. However, they were close enough, and there, there was some divergence across each of those three that we didn't have an opportunity to, to the hope of meetings and others to, to come to a consensus. Um, so that, that's kinda what this meeting is for, is to, to determine that consensus evaluation of who the best qualified firm is. The three that, that are still in consideration are, are recommending for consideration based on scoring, Haley, Associate, uh, Dusset and Associates, and Freeland-Turk Engineering Group. So, the, based on what I saw with the scoring and, and discussing it with the mayor and looking at the, uh, individual score results, one proposed, one proposal for consensus is to select, uh, Freeland and Turk Engineering Group. Their, their prior experience included working on grants, road drainage, wastewater systems, project planning. Um, had numerous regional proj, projects in the region, some construction management, and then, uh, they, they have a landscape architect at, uh, firm as part of their, uh, their teaming arrangement that I thought was, was very well qualified. The past performance, um, we, we checked with our, our grant administrator, um, with ea, on each of the three, uh, vendors who are in the running for best qualified. And they, they had positive reviews for, for each, so Freeland-Turk received a positive review. Uh, capacity to perform, their experience, local, available, they've done similar projects, have a qualified subcontract team. And they are a certified small business, and their subcontract team includes hub certified and other small business certified firms. So, the, for discussion is the selection of the, of the best qualified engineering group, and the recommendation for action is to approve Mayor I to, to complete a contract with the best qualified proposal is, is Freeland and Turk at a value not to exceed proposed provided terms. Now, that, the pricing terms haven't been determined yet, because that's, that follows after the select best qualified, so.
So let me weigh in on what, what some of, what, why, why I came to, Jared and I talked this over and why, how we came up with Freeland and Turk out of those three. Dusset is a very large company. Uh, they have more capacity, probably, and, uh, to, to do things. However, uh, the, what we're in is we're in a time crunch. Whoever we select is gonna have to be really nimble, and big companies are typically not, not that nimble. You gotta go to different levels of approvals and et cetera, and, and so I, um. From that standpoint, uh, I kinda felt like we ought to be sticking with somebody that, that has, uh, a local flair where we'll be a big chunk of their business, and then we won't get put on the back burner, et cetera, or we're gonna miss this opportunity for the management. This, so that led, led us down to Haley and Lee, which has done a lot of work for the city. I like those guys tremendously. I think they're wonderful. And Freeland and Turk, who is out of New Braunfels, Haley and Lee's out of Hutto. Um, so Freeland and Turk gets a little bit, in my book, they're a little closer, a little bit, e- easier to go, get here. Uh, they're a newer company. Uh, they haven't been in business as long as Haley and Lee and, and as long as some of these larger ones, but that can, can be bad or can be good. I'm gonna look at it as good, uh, that they're hungry and that they, they, uh, have new ideas of how to do things, and, uh, we go and do this. And so Jared and I talked with Mr. Turk, who was here, here earlier, and he had, he gave us, mentioned a number of things, which meant he'd been watching from afar. I don't know whether it's on Zoom or whether it's on, uh, uh, some of the public pages, but has, has been watching us, uh, getting some background. So when you come down to it, either Haley or Lee or Freeland and Turk is fine with my estimation, but we kinda said, let's try the new guys and go with Freeland and Turk. Uh. Sonia, of course, went through these, uh, books as did Jan, you went through, and, uh, Lisa got started on them. At least had opportunities to, to, to look at them. I know she started on them. I don't know if you got into that, but I'm gonna open it up. We're gonna go around the room now, and y'all give me your opinions on, on what this, what you think, and I'm gonna start with Sonia.
Um, I'm gonna agree with Freeland and Turk Engineering Group, um, just as you stated, that they are closer. Um, I believe that with them, um, having like, you know, small towns somewhat valued, that they would be able to relate to some of our concerns that we have here, and I think they would be easily accessible and willing to work with us. So with looking through them, whenever I looked through the book, I looked through ratings, I looked at their website, I looked at potential, if there were any core cases that happened. So I did research above and beyond, like, what was extended in the book. So I feel very confident with the selection of Freeland and Turk Engineering Group.
All right, Jan?
Uh, uh, I, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Sonia. Uh, one of the things that I thought, uh, that they could help us with, uh, a lot of these firms had, uh, experience mostly with federal grants, but the, the, these also mentioned state grants too, which I thought was a plus. I do like the close location. Uh, they seem to be easy to talk to. That was in there, they kinda made a point, uh, that they were personable. Uh, I like the fact that they weren't a huge company, uh, that, um, they seemed pretty approachable. Uh, all these firms had roads, drainage, and wastewater, uh, experience, uh, along with Freel, Freeland and Turk. Uh, but Freeland and Turk also, uh, had a part in there about, um, parks and sports facilities, I thought would be helpful for us too.
And Lisa?
And I just want to, um, apologize for not having gotten all of my numbers in. I did, as Sonia did, went above and beyond and probably spent far mu, far, far too much time, um, and then had other things that got in the way, so, uh, please accept my apology for not getting in. However, uh, Freeland and Turk were in my top three as well. So I believe that the information that Sonia and Jan have stated about them is certainly what I agree with.
Okay, so with that said, I need a motion from somebody to approve the, the, of the recommendation. So, uh.
Second.
Sonia, uh, making a motion to approve the mayor or city administrator to complete a contract with Freeland and Turk Engineering at a value not to exceed the proposed price term, um.
Can I second?
Aye.
We're good.
And Jan says, yes, all right, so motion passes three oh. Let the record show that that, that gets us to future agenda items, and so there is a couple of, one other few things that are on here. At, at the last meeting two weeks ago, we, we did go add a bunch of stuff, and we tried to get that on there, and we're not gonna go through all of those. The next thing up is, is next week, we're gonna have this public hearing. It's on the twenty-fifth, and just to go over the budget. Uh, and it is give the public an opportunity to, uh, under, look at, understand, and ask questions. Uh, we will try to limit the timeframe. That's a good idea. We need, in our resolution that we passed two weeks ago resetting the regular meetings, uh, we specified that, uh, the regular meetings were gonna be on the first and third Tuesdays unless changed by a council vote. The September, you got the calendar, uh, the September meeting, the first Tuesday is the first of the month. Now, that's always a bad time, because we don't have time to close books and do all the stuff we have to do anyway. But, uh, in this case, we really need to move the, that meeting to the eighth. Uh, and it has to do with the schedule. If, if we're gonna vote on the budget on the, on the eighth, then we have to have it published, the, the notification is published in the paper seven days in advance of that, which takes you back to the first. And to get it in the paper on the first, it, it's only published on the, on, on Thursday, the local paper. That means that it's gonna have to be published on the twenty-seven, and that means we gotta submit it on the Monday, the.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay? So, uh, if we have the meeting to vote on the first, all of that moves back a week, and we're past it already. So we really don't have any choice but to go off and move it to the eighth. So I need a motion from somebody that says we're gonna move our regular meetings that's probably on the first to the eighth of September.
I make a motion that our regular meeting will be moved from September first to September eighth of the year in two, two thousand and twenty.
I second.
And the votes three oh passes that, so that's good. Thank you very much. Uh, the other things that's on the, on the future agenda items, uh, the strategic metric review that, that we touched on a couple hours ago. Uh, we, we were talking about the bonuses and activities. That one, we, we were scheduling, trying to schedule that for the September fifteenth meeting. Uh, if not then, then, then in October, but that's when we would go, go through and try to determine these metrics and, and flesh out how the bonuses work. Uh, the long-term capital plan, that's sometime in the future, and then those others are all reviews of things that we talked about needing to do. But right now, we're down to the, uh, to, to, to work it on grants and get this budget thing put to bed, and so that's gonna consume us up at least through the eighth, so it's FYI.
Okay.
That brings us to adjournment, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I, I have a quick question. Sorry. There, well, I, I have a quick question. Is, based on the nature of all of the deadlines that we have, um, I know that we made the decision to state by resolution the first and the third, but is there anything to say that we can't have that amended in such a way that gives us the ability to set regular scheduled meetings as needed? Can we, can we say the first and the third and as needed?
At regular intervals, so.
I mean, I get it. I'm just, I just don't want us to get in a trap, that's all.
Okay, Sonia has made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. We are adjourned as of ten thirty-six.
Thank y'all.
All right, bye, buddy. Have a good evening.
Bye, thank you.